And will not be here this evening. The first order of business is the further discussion of the short-term rental issue. And I'll begin by reading to you the issues that need to be resolved. What should be the maximum occupancy of short-term rentals? Two-bedroom plus two, or three-bedroom plus two, or other considerations? What should be the permissible number of rental contracts per executive seven-day period? One or two, or for multiple-family, two versus single-family distinction? Or limitation on the number of rental nights per year? And your direction staff will provide you information with respect to the maximum number of rental contracts per week or and/or maximum number of rental nights per year submitted by other localities in the Commonwealth. Also, what parking requirement should be imposed? Must all guests be able to park onsite, or is off-site parking permitted? Any onsite parking requirement based on number of bedrooms, or the overall size of the short-term rental, or some other factor? And should the operator be required to submit to the city a parking plan? Yes, did you have a comment, Mr. Stone?
No, sir.
Okay.
I think your microphone's on upside down.
Okay, who did that?
Okay.
All right. So we'll say, we'll start first with what should be the maximum occupancy of the short-term rental? Two per bedroom, two or three per bedroom, or plus-two, or other? Ms. Henley, do you have?
Do we have some compilation of what other localities? I mean, I know we've been following it through newspaper articles and so forth, but do we have a compilation of what other places in the state are doing?
We sent that in your package. We can make more copies. I thought you were going to ask about building code, but...
Oh, copies made.
All right, so that will give you that information. I was going to answer questions about the building code. I can read them off to you.
City manager's getting you some copies.
Yes.
So we can have that.
I can answer the question now, if you'd like.
Okay, if you would deal with it.
What you're going to get in the copy is the occupancy requirements that we have found. Fairfax is proposing not to exceed six adults.
Not to exceed what?
Six adults.
Okay.
Six, well, it says six lodgers. Kevin, is that lodgers or adults?
Six adults.
Six adults. Richmond is proposed at not to exceed four adults. Harrisonburg proposed is to be determined through the conditional use permit. Alexandria is meet the definition of a family. Kevin, jump in here, what's the definition of a family? He's not listening.
That's a group of unrelated, that is a group of related persons, and not to exceed...
Four.
Four unrelated persons.
So, help me out here, you could have three people unrelated, and 20 people related, and it would be okay?
That's the definition.
I just want to make sure it's clear to you that it can go fairly large.
Is that immediate family, or is that my third?
It's not clearly defined. We have an issue with this all the time on occupancy. Arlington is six adults, two per bedroom, whichever is greater. Blacksburg, six adults. Charlottesville, six adults. Chesapeake is none. Falls Church is none. Hampton is up to five bedrooms, I mean, up to nine bedrooms. No limitation on the number per room, and they're regulating that through bed and breakfast in their zoning ordinance. Loudoun County is none. Lynchburg's none. Norfolk's none. Newport News is none. Portsmouth is designated in the zoning ordinance as a rooming house or boarding house. It's two rooms or two borders. Suffolk's none. Williamsburg is none. And Winchester is based on the square feet of dwelling and bedrooms. And I don't know what that is, but maybe, do you know what that number is? All right, we can get that number for you. In the building code, you asked us to research that, and if you don't have that, we have copies of that. Basically, oversimplification on my part is the building code's going to be a poor way to regulate occupancy. And that if you want to regulate occupancy, the better way to do it is through the zoning code. But the building code has no occupancy regulations.
It's the same thing. Let me just have...
In the housing code, it's 70 square feet.
Oh, I'm there, I'm getting there, I'm getting there. Hold on, hold on, hold on. In the residential code, there's no occupancy regulations for single-family, duplexes, or townhouses. Multifamily apartments and condominiums is one person for each 200 square feet. And then in the maintenance code, which has property, has issues for overcrowding, which again, I'm not, we don't feel strongly that you can use this to regulate what you want to do, but if you want to use it as guideline, it basically, any residential, including single-family, duplexes, townhouses, and multifamily, is 70 square feet per person with 50 square feet for each additional person, for each bedroom. So three people would be 170 square feet. That's the occupancy information that we have.
Yes, John?
You know, when you look at all, first of all, thank you for compiling all this, because it helps, but none of these places have dedicated resort areas that I am aware of, so I think that's a slight difference, and I think it comes back to my point.
Major difference.
And also the diversity of people in North Beach, who want one per week. We've got established business models in Sandbridge or something else. I know Mark said that we'd have to create zoning categories to accommodate that, but I think it does prove why we're not going to be able to have one-size-fits-all, given the diversity of feedback we're hearing from different parts of our community. And I don't, and I think, well, this is helpful as a frame of reference of, you know, having how low you want to go, it doesn't really match up with the characteristics of some parts of our community that are definitely different from what you would find in Fairfax County or Richmond. And I don't know how we do that, but I think the only way you're going to be able to do that is to take Mark's idea of having to have different zoning classifications, and then have more customized regulations to match what the practices and the feedback of the community, if you want to do this. That's my take.
Yes, Rosemary.
And I think another thing we need to consider is, there's buildings like Dolphin Run and Edgewater that do short-term rentals, and they've been doing it their entire life of their buildings. And we really need to be careful not to alter what these people have been doing for, I think Dolphin Run was built 1976, and they've been doing this since then. And that's, a lot of those properties are investment properties.
I think it gets back to the point we've been making about saying that we're going to allow conditional use permits citywide is not a good strategy, and does not provide protection to our neighborhoods. And I hope that when we get towards the end, as we walk through this process, see the error of that point, because I think it makes our neighborhoods very vulnerable.
So what John is saying, that each overlay district should probably have its own sets of rules, and I mean, you look at, I wish John was here, some of the old beach neighborhoods, they don't even have a driveway. How do you, how do you talk about departures got to be on the property? And so our city is really complex.
All right, so with those comments, do you want to decide on the overlay districts first?
Yes.
And then, once you do that, then we can have the staff work up recommendations on the number of people per bedroom and all in each overlay district?
What I would suggest is, rather than burdening with saying they make a recommendation, is to give us a notional straw man to start a discussion, and that way, we don't put the staff in a position of advocating for something, but giving us a point of departure. And I think that, I wouldn't want to think they recommended it, because they're probably just saying, here's the place to start.
Mr. Styles is trying to get us on the right road here.
Well, I'm just trying to make sure we don't get off on the wrong road here.
Okay.
You can, as Mr. Moss has discussed, and as I have acknowledged previously, you can have different regulations for differently situated fact patterns.
Okay.
But there is a principle of uniformity that is an overarching principle in all zoning-related actions. And there have been a number of challenges, and there are, there's a lot of case law out there on what happens when you don't have uniformity. So it's going to require some very specific findings, and I mean, very, very specific findings, as to why a short-term rental in, for example, the North End overlay is materially different than a short-term rental in some other community in our city. I think that you can get past that hurdle pretty clearly with areas along the beach and bay, where, as various council members have correctly pointed out, this is a long-term recurring business activity. I will tell you that I have some concern as to more interior portions of the city where this activity has not been so well-established and is not so widespread. And so my actual recommendation to you is to treat those as binary choices, to say, here are the areas where we make a finding that there has been historic short-term rental resort-type usage, and areas that have not, and not try to segregate regulations as to all these other ones over here. Because I'm afraid that will be very hard to successfully craft for staff and to defend after it's crafted.
So how do you deal with the other ones, in other words?
Well, I think council needs to just say as to those, this is what we think the number of contracts should be. I mean, in an area where it's not been a prevalent business practice, you may say, as a body, one contract per week is enough. In areas where it has operated, you know, where the community has had this activity ongoing, and where there is demonstrated demand that has been met already by more than one contract per week, you treat those differently. I will tell you that the initial draft, Mr. Mayor, that was prepared for you and the former mayor, made that distinction between single-family and multifamily, because the stakeholder groups that we had heard from told us that that would work. Now, if, and I don't know how that, I don't know how that relates to all of the properties that you just mentioned, Ms. Wilson, it may or may not address it. But I think you can, again, I think you can make a distinction between areas in the oceanfront, areas in Sandbridge, areas in Chesapeake Beach, and maybe some other areas where you can say, this has been a long-term practice, and the practice has involved more than one rental contract per week, and we want to, we're maintaining the status quo. That hasn't been, at least on a broad community basis, the same in other communities. That's the distinction that I would feel most comfortable defending, and I think would be the easiest for us to draft and present to you.
Yes.
I don't know whether that accomplishes your goals or not.
Maybe what we can do is the outside of the overlay districts come up with some criteria for those. I think that's going to be easier than all the overlay districts.
Well, in part, good, in part, yes, but here's the, if our fund, and I, this is what, I don't know what our first principles are, my first principles are to protect the integrity of residential neighborhoods. And what I've heard is, we can't do that on a conditional use basis. That's not going to be possible, because once we approve and start approving these, we are going to be applying standards, these objective standards that we have, and independent of the neighborhood's concerns, if they meet them, we are not going to be able to say no without being arbitrary and capricious. Just because a neighborhood doesn't want them is not a legal basis for denial. So what you're really saying is that once you prove the first one, and a couple of them, like in an HOA, you've established a precedent, and every other person, you're going to basically be saying yes to, like daycare centers. We rarely say no. And so in effect, the very thing we wanted to protect, we provided an enabler to undermine. So I think the choice is, where are you going to allow them, and where are you not? And I think it's just as binary as Mark has suggested, but the conditional use permit just puts you down the path of the slow roll of a de facto overlay district with a different set of regulations. And that is not what I'm hearing from people out in the community. And I've been going door-to-door, and this is a topic that people bring up, and I know you're getting emails too, I think they've told us a message that, you know, they don't want to turn their neighborhoods into hotel districts. Now, good, better, and different, that's the feedback for the people I'm getting that I work for. So I am not an advocate of conditional use permit for that very reason.
What I am hearing you saying, and correct me if I've misinterpreted your comments, is that other than the overlay districts, you don't think there should be any?
Except I grandfather the people, which we can do, the people who have registered and have been paying by that date, they'd be grandfathered, would run with their property, I think that's what we said. I'm for that, but that would be, that'd be containing the situation.
But that's effective the July date?
Yes, it just passed, correct.
All right, Ms. Henley, would you?
Well, I think I agreed with John up until that last statement. But when we have some that are operating in a very bad situation now, that's being very disruptive to a neighborhood, and I think you all have been getting some emails from a little neighborhood there in Lagamar that has one, and it's ruined their quality of life. So how, if we're going to be grandfathering existing ones, we don't really have any tool for doing anything about something that's being operated not well. Anyway, that statement. But even in overlay districts, I think when we say historically, they've been short-term rentals, yes, short-term rentals have been in many neighborhoods, some neighborhoods for a long time. I mean, I particularly think of North Virginia Beach, that's where the schoolteachers used to always go, and they would, but it was a different thing. It wasn't this two-times-a-week short-term rental. It was, the houses would be rented for nine months, but you know, you knew that from Memorial Day to Labor Day, you had to be out of there, because the owner was going to be renting it for weekly rentals, and the rent was going to be a whole lot more. So what we historically really had was a very different situation with short-term rentals than what we're talking about, legalizing. And as long as it happened that way, what I'm hearing from neighborhoods that historically have had them was, you know, that was fine, they were, you know, we were okay with that. But what has been the straw that broke the camel's back, and I think this has only happened in the last three or four years, is we have these that, you know, are year-round, not necessarily rented to families, many rentals in a week or for a weekend, being disruptive. And that's what really brought all of this to the fore. And so just to say that a neighborhood has historically had them, and what I'm hearing from other neighborhoods who have historically had them, and now this question of, are they going to be overlay districts or not, they say yes, but that's not the way it was. We were okay the way it used to be, but we don't like what it is becoming. And there's also the fact that these have become short-term rentals from the time that somebody either purchased the property to specifically make it short-term rental, or built it to be short-term rental, even though they indicated on the building permit that it was going to be a single-family residence. So it has become a commercial investment property for tourism rental. And that didn't happen before, at least not to this extent. Like I say, it was the nine months and then weekly rentals. So I think what we've got is just this different thing that's kind of been the straw that broke the camel's back, and we're trying to rationalize that. But the old short-term rentals, you know, worked for years, and people just, you know, were okay with it. But now what we've got is a different animal, and to try to justify that, I'm having trouble, and I'm hearing people from some of these other neighborhoods that are having trouble with that as well.
Number one, it sounds to me like we have to decide whether we're going to do overlay districts, and under what conditions are we going to do them? That's the first thing. Do you want, does the council want to make the decision as to the overlay districts? Or do you want to do some type of a mail-in to the property owners in the areas to determine whether or not they want an overlay district? How do you want to decide whether or not you're going to do an overlay district?
My thought would be, somebody from the neighborhood would have to petition to request that their neighborhood be in consideration for an overlay district, and then we begin the mailing process, and we have a hearing on that community.
I think we should hold the hearing in the area.
I'm sorry, John, I can't hear what you're saying.
Hold the hearing in the proximity of the community in which the overlay district's being proposed. But I think that it's important that somebody from the community, not us, initiate the process.
I agree with that.
Okay.
If I can, so you're talking about the initial overlays as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Because I've heard a lot of conflicting things.
Except for Sandbridge. But not including Sandbridge.
Well, Sandbridge, we don't have jurisdiction ever.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Right, he's talking about overlays and the initial overlays with the adoption of this ordinance. It says, does the city council wish to create additional overlays other than the Sandbridge at the time of the enactment of the STR ordinance, and that's the question.
That's correct.
So that's what I was trying to figure out, because based on what John had said before, as I recall, it was, these overlays could be implemented again if a particular neighborhood, excuse me, a particular neighborhood went forward and said, this is what we want to do.
Correct, but it would not be an...
Red Mill or something.
Correct.
And who's going to define the boundaries of the overlay?
Because we had that before, didn't we? Because aren't a lot of these already defined?
Oh, yeah, they're defined, but he's talking about a citizen petitioning for an overlay district, and somebody's got to define what that overlay district would be for, so the citizens in that area, whatever that defined area is.
Well, my thought, and Mark, I mean, when the original developer recorded the plat for the property, and I know that some of these neighborhoods go back prior to plat recordation, don't they?
That along?
I assume so.
Well, an easy way to do it is, if there was a plat recorded, whatever community somebody petitions from, where that plat was recorded for that community, that's the boundary.
Can I, can I just postulate?
Please.
Rather than making us look back at an 1896 plat, couldn't we just say to the entity that's proposing the overlay, define specifically for us what you are proposing, and then we will notify all of the people within the boundaries you identify? I mean, I'm not...
No, I think that's perfect.
But we also have the ones that have been drawn, that they could use as a suggestion.
Correct.
They could request those, and then they could tell us the boundaries that they want to petition for.
Okay.
Now, you then may get into, somebody who lives just on the other side of the street may come in and say, well, I'd like to be included in that too. I mean, I...
Well, adjacent property owners would have to be notified, wouldn't they?
Right, right, right.
Yes, John?
You have only a couple of things that are already legally pre-established. Census tracts are previously established and codified and used for elections, or all the elections, and keeping demographics, that's a legally identified thing, and recognized by the federal government. And you actually have the actual subdivision boundaries, whether it's Pembroke Manor, Aragon, or Red Mill, or whatever, you have those, and then you have the places where those are absent. Someone's always going to be on the wrong side of a line. It's too undredging, probably, for anything else, you just have to accept that arbitrariness, because somewhere, there's going to be an arbitrary line unless you're at the boundary of Norfolk. So I just think you accept that. But that's really the only things that I know that are really codified anywhere, are the boundaries of the actual subdivisions, and census tracts. Maybe there's something else, but that's the two things I'm aware of that we have. And maybe there's something else that people are aware of, but that's what I know.
Yes, Barb?
I'm just, back to this initial overlay concept, I think when you wrote this, you were thinking that we would do this as a part of the initial STR ordinance, but we're not talking about doing that, we're talking about a process that would require...
Correct, approving a process of which a community could become an overlay.
Right.
Correct.
So what we would do in the ordinance would be defined as process?
Correct.
Okay, we would not be making any overlay districts?
No, that would be up to the residents.
That would have to come later?
Correct.
At the request of some?
The community.
One from the community, or a community, okay.
And I would suggest that along with that, and maybe Kevin, or Kay, or Barry, or somebody will disagree with me, but if that's the case...
Anybody's not going to disagree about this, are we?
The point I was going to get to is, one of the reasons for considering doing additional initial overlays was, as soon as you adopt this STR regulation, there are going to be properties that are operating that are now unlawful until an overlay is created. So I would propose that you make it, make the ordinance effective some period of time after, so you can at least process those initial applications from communities.
But we're grandfathering all the people that are practiced in the ordinance.
Well, there will be some who may not qualify for grandfathering based on your date, that we're still going to be going out to get.
Which would give them a good reason to petition to become an overlay district. So it was initiate the process.
Okay, so where we are, if I understand what Ben has suggested, what you've said, John?
Sir?
And Laura's comments. We create an ordinance that defines the process whereby we create overlay districts, is that all right?
Yes.
And once we do that, then we consider each, we send letters out to all of the property owners within the suggested overlay district, and we have a public hearing, and...
In the proximity of the community.
And wherever, you know. And we have a public hearing, I would think it, if you want to vote on it, you probably ought to do it here, to be honest with you. Because, I see you're waving your hand down there.
I was talking to, I was responding to a whispered comment from the manager.
I see.
I'm sorry, sir.
Do you have to go through Planning Commission and Council, or just...
That's a good question.
What we had, what we had discussed before when we were on this trail was, this would be in advance of, this first public meeting would be to determine whether there was sufficient support to refer it to the Planning Commission. So you would have a public hearing, you would hear from the citizens about whether to refer it, the citizens would still have an opportunity then, they'll get notice again when it goes to the Planning Commission, because it's statutorily required. There'll be another public hearing in the Planning Commission, it'll come back with a recommendation from Planning Commission, there'll be another opportunity for it to come before your body. So my understanding before, and you can change it, but my understanding before was you were saying, we want to have this citizen-initiated request, a definition of the boundary, a public hearing in the community, then it would come on for a council vote as to whether or not to refer that overlay to the Planning Commission, and then it would track along, just like any other planning item would track along.
And the application would be in the name of the city, correct? I'm trying to ask, who's the applicant in that case? I'm trying to ask, who's the applicant in that case?
The applicant would be the initiator of the process.
I'm just asking. I, I'm getting nods back there, but I don't know what the nods indicate.
What are the nods indicate?
We're trying to think that it would be come forward as a zoning amendment, because we're going to amend the zoning ordinance to add this, it would come in the name of the city as a zoning amendment.
That's what I thought.
I see, okay.
We wouldn't, you wouldn't consider it as a body unless it was initiated by a citizen, but once you endorse it moving forward, it would be, it would come, as is, like any other zoning amendment, would come.
That's what I thought, I was just trying to confirm.
All right, Barbara?
Having just one citizen initiate this whole process sounds pretty lax. I think we can really get ourselves into an issue with that. Is there some way that we could define enough interests that we would want to pursue? Or are we?
A certain threshold they would have to meet in terms of?
Maybe, maybe they should have, I know that we have problems by identifying property owners, because you said, you know, if somebody owns it as a trust or something like that, there are going to be many people, but one person being able to initiate this whole process sounds like we could get ourselves into a real mess.
Please just don't make it a percentage of the.
Yeah, I, I appreciate what you all said, I can understand, that's the problem.
Maybe you, maybe you make it a petition that has to be signed by X number of people within the community. Not a percentage, but just a flat number. So that you know whether it's, you know, whether there's enough support to justify calling a special meeting out in the community to address it.
What would be a reasonable number of people?
That is a policy question.
Ben, do you have a suggestion?
Uh, I'd have to do some research, I mean, it would depend on the size of the community, I would have to imagine.
Yeah.
But then aren't we going back to percentage?
Um, not necessarily.
I'm always willing to be bold. If you, if it only takes 125 residents to get your name on the ballot, maybe it should only take 50 people to have a special hearing. Think about the numbers, I'm just trying to be realistic about a number that's already set out there.
Fifty people want a special hearing, that's a good number.
I think that's, I don't, I think that's how the relationship to getting your name on the ballot, so I don't think it's an overly big number.
That's a goodly number of people, I, I would agree with you, John.
Fifty people who are property owners, not just 50 people out in the world.
Right, property owners.
Okay, so.
You know, everybody down at the grocery store signs a petition, you know, and they live everywhere else, it has to be property owners.
So are we only going to consider the overlay districts that we've already considered, or is this for any neighborhood?
I understood it'd be for any neighborhood that wanted to, you may end up having a lot of hearings.
Yeah.
Now, that's 50 people.
Is there a better suggestion?
Who all have ownership interest in the area defined, but it could be Mr. and Mrs.'s Styles and, uh, you know, it could be 25 couples, or.
That's correct.
I, I think.
That's okay.
I would prefer 50 properties, in other words.
You can do that.
But can you do that?
I, I don't know if you can find 50 properties in some of them.
I think that would be tough, that would be pollinating some people.
Just 50 citizens, yeah.
But they need to be over 18.
Hey, Barbara?
They need to be over 18.
Don't, if you make it too hard, it'll, but itself, it becomes its own bureaucratic nightmare.
So we're trying to avoid that.
I know we are.
Now, when you file your petitions.
But, but Mark, let me jump in here, when we initially started this conversation, we had talked about excluding some of the neighborhoods that were not directly related, and I think John and I were having that conversation. And so, you know, from the standpoint of making sure that we don't have, you know, every neighborhood in the city of Virginia Beach, aren't we going to exclude some of the inner neighborhoods that are not privy to some of these short-term rentals, and have not historically been a part of them?
Well, my thought always was, is we are trying to, by not initiating, trying to protect neighborhoods.
Correct.
But if the neighborhoods themselves decide, like in Witch Duck Point, there's several subdivisions, Lewis and I love the Witch Duck Farms, and Witch Duck Point, there's, I don't know, there must be five or six little neighborhoods that make up Witch Duck Point. So they come in and say, "We want to have this," and I'd be surprised, but let's say, you have your public hearing, and everyone's saying, "Yep, yep, 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 we want that," and they know what they're buying into, you know, I wouldn't say, "Oh, well, if that's what the community wants," I think we're, just because 50 people come out and say they'd like to have that, doesn't mean in the end the council's going to say yes. It just means we're going to vet the issue and have a public discussion and consider it. We're not delegating the final decision-making to that, but I think it should get a great deference, but if it's, I think you would agree that if it was 51% to 49, you probably wouldn't impose on the 49 for 51. But I think you'd look at it differently if you were looking at traditional areas where they've had a lot of this going on, you would look at that differently. So I think each one of these become, as it should be, and I think Barbara would agree, each of these should be a tailored response. I think that's the only way we're going to be able to treat, if you say you're going to treat everybody the same, that is not going to be neighborhood justice, that's just going to be fiat. So I think we're going to have to recognize that everyone will be a unique discussion, and I'm with Mark, I don't, I can see we could have a lot of these, and they're not going to always be friendly, but either you could do the suggestion, say, "Nope, it's only in these areas where we think that applies, we're excluding all these R10, or blah, blah, blah." That's a possibility, but it wasn't what I was thinking, I was just thinking, giving people the, a chance if they wanted to really have that, and the substantial numbers, said, and that's that next step of the process. Once you hold the hearing, what has to take place to get before we're willing to take it to the Planning Commission? And I think that's another step in the process, just because 50 people show up at Allentown Elementary and say, "Let's make Allentown a short-term rental district," I think you probably wouldn't act on that. You probably would have, the next step is, how do you go about, is that threshold 60, is it 70, is it 80? I think that's that next step that Barbara talked about, how do you get from there to voting to actually referring it to the Planning Commission is another step.
Okay, Bob's got some comments.
Yeah, you know, just a thought, as we're going forward and creating all of, you know, maybe a multitude more of these places, I think an underlying problem we've always had was code enforcement with the existing ones. And I think if we maintain the integrity of the neighborhoods, you know, I think it's going to be essential going forward that we have processes in place to make sure that code enforcement, you know, guidelines are imposed in a way to, you know, to maintain the, the integrity of the neighborhoods, and, you know, to make them less of a nuisance or inconvenience to the neighbors.
Mr., yes?
But I think it still goes back to the, the potential that we have of, of really changing our residential neighborhoods. And, and I worry about the permanence of this action. I know we had talked about making it a, or one of the conditions being that it would be for a certain length of time or some such, but anytime we do something that makes it permanent for our residential neighborhoods, you know, the group that's there today, you know, may not, it may not really be the best thing, but that, that, that permanence of any zoning action is, is just a concern of mine. And, and what we are changing the city as far as, you know, being a good place to live with quality of life and the nice neighborhood and all that, you know, this is what we are really messing with.
The real question, Mr. Styles, is if we go through the process that, that we're talking about here, and we get the 50 names, we have a public hearing, we create, uh, an overlay district, or whatever you want to count a district you want to call it, where short-term rentals are allowed, we still have to define what can happen in those short-term rental districts, but before we get to that point, to the point that Ms. Henley has brought up just now, is, once you do that, and once you establish that, can you really take that right away from those property owners after that?
Once this council adopts a zoning ordinance that either by overlay or otherwise creates a use or permits a use, and someone relies on that and begins that use and expends any resources towards that, then they have a vested right that cannot be taken away.
Okay, so everybody needs to understand, I thought that was the answer, but I wanted to hear it from the, the guy who's the authority on it. And so everybody needs to understand that once we put this process in place and we exercise it for the first time, what we have done is we have set in stone what's going to happen in those areas from then on. And so, uh, it, you know, it sounds like a plan, but you, we all need to understand how permanent it is, too, once it's done. And, uh, so what I need to know, and what staff needs to know, Kay needs to know, because she's the one who's going to have to draw all this up, is where the council is on this particular issue. I think, I think you, you, Ben, you've, you've helped bring this to a head, as, as far as what could happen. And, uh, but we need to give direction if we want the legal staff to draw up, uh, some type of, would it be an enabling ordinance, or what would it be?
It would just be part of the short, it would just be a, a, a.
Part of the zoning.
Article of the short-term rental ordinance.
Yeah, okay. Uh, so the question is, do we want the legal department to do that? Rosemary?
Yes.
You do. Jim? Barbara?
I guess we have to give some answer to these people, but I would certainly think that it has to be totally explained to people what they're getting themselves into, and it could very well be that nobody wants to be in an overlay district if they understand all of this, but since we have this situation, as long as we understand that this is just, just sort of a, a finding out from the people whether or not they want to pursue or not with all of this very explained, and we're not committed to doing, and we don't mind going forward and finding out what the people think.
Well, what we're talking about right now is a process to where we get to the point to whether we decide whether or not to send a plan to the Planning Commission, am I correct?
Yes, you are, you are, you are creating another step in the deliberative process.
Right, yeah.
And other people would have inserted the word, a different word, the bureaucratic process, but it is, it is, it is another, you're, you're creating another step that allows you to have some control or, or some process by which you know you're going to initiate a referral, or you're going to consider initiating a referral. I would make very clear in the ordinance that merely having the public hearing does not guarantee that it will ultimately be referred.
And make it clear that the, uh, public hearing is as a result of the community requesting it.
Right, right.
All right.
As long as all that's very plain in what you write up.
So where are?
He's going to make it very plain.
Not too much we believe.
So are you okay?
Okay.
I have full confidence in Kay.
Okay, John?
I'm on board, it's basically taking Sandbridge as the bench.
Yes.
Jessica, okay, we got some direction on something here. We'll deal with the bedrooms and all that at the next meeting, maybe, because we're already spent 45 minutes here, and I doubt if we can resolve that, those issues, in 15 minutes. And, uh, I also think we all need to review the information that was passed out to us today to make sure we understand all of that, too. So, yes.
So can I just clarify my understanding? We had in here initial overlays and then future overlays, and you have now explained, I think, to we understand what will be the process for the consideration of future overlays, and do I also understand that there will be no initial overlays other than as required by the General Assembly action?
Right, right. Everybody understand that, all right? Everybody agreeable to move on then and wait for the next meeting to decide on the bedroom issues and all that? Okay, thank you very much. All right. Next, we have the Human Rights Commission Annual Report.
So Raj Islam is the chairman of the Human Rights Commission, and I think Raj and other members of the board are here today and will be joining us shortly. Come on in. Raj?
Sorry?
The podium is you.
You're fine. How's everyone doing?
Would you introduce your board members today?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
How's everyone? Good afternoon, I'm Raj Islam, chairman of the Virginia Beach Human Rights Commission. I'd like to also welcome fellow commissioners Vivian Blaze, Fall Jim Park, Michael Berlucci, our executive director Regina Hillier, who's right over there, our staff liaison also, Kathy Henson, and good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Jones, and Vice Mayor Wood, our liaisons Bobby Dyer and Shannon Kane, who's not here yet, members of City Council, and also Mr. Dave Hanson, our city manager. I'd like to present to you the fiscal year 18 annual report for the Virginia Beach Human Rights Commission. We serve as an advisory agency to the city of, uh, City Council of Virginia Beach. Our mission is to institute, conduct, and engage in education, informal programs for the promotion of mutual understanding and respect amongst all people and fulfillment of human rights. The objectives listed above allows us to be your subject matter experts, again, your subject matter experts, um, of human rights by being the pulse of the community. We want to ensure that you all know that we do not work in silos. The only way that human rights is at the forefront and not something that's forgotten is through true collaboration. I was, uh, making sure that our rest of the slides were still going. In August of 2017, the Virginia Beach Human Rights Commission, in partnership with Hampton Roads Pride, visited the Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office to meet and congratulate their new LGBT liaison, Corporal Guy Saucier. The support of the creation of the Public Safety LGBT Liaisons through our city and region is an ongoing effort to promote equity and inclusion in the workplace and in our community. Through the efforts of the Virginia Beach Human Rights Commission and Hampton Roads Pride, the Association of Public Safety Professionals and LGBT Liaisons, representing the regional police, fire, and EMS agencies known as the Hampton Roads LGBT Public Safety Consortium, was formed. This partnership promotes trust, respect, and understanding in order to foster safe and equitable cities and better serve our community. The Human Rights Commission, oh, I'm sorry, HRC, this is one of those where HRC and Housing Resource Center sometimes gets me on paper. So the Housing Resource Center, Department of Housing Neighborhood Preservation, and the Beach Community Partnership, or Bringing an End to All of City Homelessness, organized and sponsored the Give the Gift of Warmth Donation Drive, November 17 through December 8, to collect winter clothing for adults experiencing homelessness. On December 21, the HRC, or Human Rights Commission, and the Department of Housing Neighborhood Preservation, and the Beach Community Partnership sponsored the city's homeless persons memorial service and vigil. The event is held on the longest night of each year in observance of National Homeless Persons Memorial Day in order to commemorate the lives of men and women who have died homeless. This was the last vigil at the Lighthouse Center before the Housing Resource Center opened here in the spring of 2018, or the summer, sorry, August. So, that's me going with my slides there. The ceremony included remarks by council. The ceremony included remarks by council member Bob Dyer, Andy Friedman, Director of Housing and Neighborhood Preservation. And Council Dyer and I co-read the proclamation on behalf of Mayor Sessoms and the City Council declaring December 21, 2017, as Virginia Beach Homeless Persons Memorial Day. And during the event, winter clothing donated by citizens were also provided to guests experiencing homelessness. On Thursday evening, April 5, 2018, more than 230 people gathered at the Virginia Beach Convention Center for the Virginia Beach Human Rights Commission's 24th Annual Human Rights Awards Program to honor citizens whose efforts to promote cultural diversity, social awareness, equal opportunity, and exemplified our theme, diverse community, one humanity. This year's award honorees were Community Outreach Program, or the VBUMC, Kenick L., the Hampton Roads Heroin Working Group, Bobby Malati, I Need a Lighthouse, and Barbara Uncle. And also, last but not least, the Virginia Museum of Contemporary Art. The Daniel M. Stone Humanitarian Award was given to Todd Walker. The Myra E. Obendorf Human Rights Achievement and Government Award recipient was Mary Culver. And the Helen P. Schropshire Award, or Human Rights Youth Award, was presented to Rort Corson. See, she made it all nice and fancy. So, thank you again, Kathy. All right. The centerpieces were works of art created by students from all over Virginia Beach. And this is something unique and awesome that was done. Some of, some by students of the Visual Arts Program at Greenwood Collegiate and some from the Teen Advisory Group from the Oceanfront and Great Neck Libraries. The ambiance was greatly uplifted by the piano performance of Dr. Nancy Whitfield. Television and radio personality Becky Livas served as the emcee. And Sergeant Shelley Meister, who's the supervisor of the Police Department's Special Victims Unit and who is also currently the LGBT liaison, was the keynote speaker. They both did excellent. On April 14, the vibe created district and the Virginia Beach Human Rights Commission joined the city and local partners to host the First Art of Humanity in Honor of the Season of Nonviolence Event. The event opened with the reading of the resolution of the Virginia Beach City Council to commemorate the 50th anniversary of the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and to herald the season of non, for nonviolence. And HRC has maintained a constant presence at the Oceanfront for many, many years. But this year, we went with a more robust program. And especially with the presence during the Oceanfront, which has traditionally been known as College Beach Week or Week 17, we decided to broaden the traditional weekend observation program, which normally meant, you know, we had human rights commissioners out there doing observations. And we asked for community members to join the commissioners as observers and invited them to provide insight based upon their observations on issues such as capacity, perception, safety, traffic, and parking. On Friday, April 27 and Saturday, April 28, the commission hosted 56 individuals who filled 84 two-hour observation time slots. The City Council, our City Council liaisons, Shannon Kane, Bob Dyer, all hosted a follow-up meeting with observers facilitated by the STUR office in order to capture their feedback for future planning. Two public forums were held prior, I want to make mention this. They were held prior to College Beach Weekend to provide information and a debrief meeting was held after for observers to provide feedback for city leadership. And I want to thank you, Mr. City Manager, for that. The community observer, observer program was successful in collaboration with the Police Department and the HRC and resulted in 56 folks participating throughout the entire weekend, again. Human rights commissioners, political leaders, and citizens from across Virginia attended the Virginia Association for Human Rights, or VAHR Annual Meeting and Conference, June 1st to 2nd of 2018 at the Wyndham. Commissioner Teresa Stanley briefed the group on efforts made by the HRC in partnership with other community members towards Medicaid expansion and celebrated the recent outcome of full expansion in Virginia. The conference also provided opportunities to discuss DACA in Virginia Fair Housing, voting rights in Virginia, and other legislative items that have human rights implications. And a panel of high school and college students, youth voices rising, that will focus on issues of importance of youth advocacy methods and our youth's evolving roles for community engagement. The purpose of the conference is to provide a medium for exchange of ideas and information gathering for the various statutory commissions throughout the Commonwealth. And, you know, we get, this is our chance for networking, see what is working and what isn't working with several commissions throughout the state. And I know every one of you love our legislative agenda items. And we appreciate all the support that you've given over the last several years for our agenda items, especially the expansion of the Virginia Human Rights Act to prohibit discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity, support increased funding for mental health care and housing, support increased funding for opioid prevention, treatment, and recovery, full expansion of Medicaid as provided by the Affordable Care Act, which, again, I mentioned earlier, has passed, support legislation that would remove barriers to voter participation, enact nonpartisan redistricting, redistricting reform, and improve the ability of all Virginia citizens to exercise their fundamental right to vote. Support legislation that would enable undocumented immigrants who reside in Virginia and meet certain qualifications to apply for temporary or limited duration driver licenses, which would clearly be distinguishable from regular licenses and would be bold text indicating that they are not valid for any use other than driving. The City Council approved the inclusion of four items in their adopted legislative agenda as suggested by the Virginia Beach HRC with some edits. Council included the expansion of the Virginia Human Rights Act to prohibit discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity and added explicitly prohibit racial profiling. The recommendation for mental health care was kept, but housing was removed and opioid funding included in its place. The recommendation regarding driver's licenses for undocumented immigrants was not approved by council for inclusion into the agenda this last year. Hopefully, we'll see what happens for this upcoming year. And of course, our letters to council. Letters to City Council, and this was actually first. So, we wrote a letter to City Council and read it at the Virginia Beach City Public Schools Board Meeting in support of VBCPS School Board for their continuing efforts to foster a trusting, open, honest, equitable, and inclusive learning environment for all students by deciding to keep Bayside 6th Grade Campus intact during the rebuilding of the Thurgood Elementary School facility. This is the first time that the HRC has spoken in front of that body and Commissioner stood in unity as it, as the letter was read. And this letter was actually, I believe, that same day given to you for your packets. And it went over, in my opinion, very well. Letter to City Council regarding the plight of Puerto Rican people and requesting that council would continue to raise the ongoing humanitarian concerns with state and federal officials. Letter to City Council in partnership with the Passers and Community Leaders Roundtable highlighting the professionalism and dedication of the Virginia Beach Police Department and expressing gratitude of the acts of service they provide to our citizens and guests. Letter to City Council requesting that the city evaluate the impact of including a soft start in the request for proposal that would extend entertainment opportunities to Fridays and Saturdays, only starting from the second weekend in April until the Friday before Memorial Day. As far as inquiries go, one of the objectives of the HRC is to provide assistance to persons who believe their rights have been violated. The commission accomplishes this by identifying the appropriate federal, state, and local agencies that can address the complaint and by referring to the person to that appropriate agency. Below is the breakdown of the 18 inquiries the HRC received in the past year. If you guys can't read that, 39% other concerns were, fell under Mental Health Resources, has been a large part of the numbers. 28% was housing, 6% education, and 6% when it came down to accommodation. And this, as far as community engagement, this has been another very progressive year for our commissioners. With our focus structure from our past retreat of February 2016, we have been able to move our mission forward in many proactive ways, continuing our efforts with the Resort Advisory Commission with the Joint Oceanfront Committee, being invited to the table by the Historic Preservation Commission to have three of our commissioners be a part of the Prince San County Confederate Statue Roundtable, awarding the Virginia Beach Police Department's first humanitarian ribbon recipients, and so much more. We are ensuring that the Human Rights Commission is taking care of the citizens of Virginia Beach. And we have our next retreat September 13 of 2018 and hope to have much more to come in following years. So, do we have any questions?
Any questions, yes, Bob?
I just want to give kudos to a remarkable group of people who give unselfishly to the city in many ways. This group takes on many difficult, sensitive areas and does it with, you know, class and distinction and, you know, for the good of the city. And, you know, special to Rod and the city staff to help on. Your collaboration with the Police Department for Beach Weekend just shows your willingness to outreach and, you know, and work with the Oceanfront folks to, you know, really try to build a positive bridge going forward. And your impact is measurable and appreciated.
Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, I wanted to say the same thing specifically about the Week 17 issue and then also with the issue with the LGBT liaisons to the public safety agencies. I think now every public safety agency or soon is represented in the city. I know federal government has, has liaisons as well. And I think it's a phenomenally good thing. And y'all did a great, great amount of work on this and I really appreciate what you did.
And kudos to our commissioners that made, you know, at the meetings, that's not where the real work happens, that happens at our committees. And I, you know, give them
Some of you guys are a bit tenacious, I will tell you that.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Raj?
Next, we go to the city managers' briefings, food trucks update. Mr. Hanson?
Yes, sir. I would, as Kay gets set to come forth and provide her update and kind of walk us through this, I would turn it over to council members Abbott and Dyer, who were leading the charge on this conversation.
So, Bobby and I have been very hard at work reaching out with people. We've, we've been at this for a few months now. We've met from everybody from some restaurant holders to food truck owners to some people who didn't really have any direct buy-in in terms of how the subcommittee was made up. We had, I feel, a pretty diverse group of people and we, we had some good conversations, some constructive conversations through that process. And I just wanted to make mention MJ Medler's here. She owns Captain Krabby Food Truck. She's, if anybody has any direct questions at some point, you can ask her. But, you know, I, I'm happy to, I'm excited to answer any questions. And I know, you know, I know Bobby has anything he wants to add on to that. But staff has been incredibly helpful and I, I think it's been a very good process.
Well, I think what we try to do in process is get the right people to the table. And we form ad hoc committees, we deal with the problem, and then we make recommendations. The recommendations are given to the city manager. And then afterwards, we usually do an after-action report. But this one is a little bit more sticky. It, you know, has some complications, granted. But once again, I think we have to look at the underlying cause of why we move forward with this is that we had a segment of our business population that quite frankly was treated unfairly. You know, they were treated as peddlers. And that put a group of, you know, really draconian restrictions on them, what they could do. And if I can give you an example of one person that participated in our group was George the Bagel Baker. He really makes some good bagels, you know, Great Neck Shopping Center, shameless plug. But the thing is, there are a lot of bricks and mortar restaurants now going to food trucks also to augment their businesses. They're also using food trucks as, dare I say, vehicles to actually open up their own restaurant. A lot of restaurants fail when they open up the first year. You know, it's a tough business, you know, tremendous amount of startup costs and everything. So, we looked at this as an opportunity to help a small business environment not only survive but thrive in a very competitive environment. And the point is that the restrictions that were put on them were inhibiting their business practices. So, what we did, we had members of the bricks and mortar, we had the food truck industry, and then we had, you know, folks that had bricks and mortar and food trucks. We started off talking about and hammered some things out. Our chair was a gentleman by the name of Dave Browning, who's part of our regular steering committee. He owns the Imperial Palace Restaurant. And at first, I would say he was a little bit skeptical about things. But then, once we had the discourse going back and forth and found out what was going on, it's not necessarily the competition that a lot of folks thought it was going to be, especially when we were coming up with rules about, you know, not putting a food truck in front of an establishment or in a parking lot right there. But realize that they serve a need, an unfulfilled need. They go to construction sites, they go to the corporate centers where a lot of folks can't get out to go to lunch, they're restricted. And what we're trying to do is craft a win-win. Now, once we got this kind of all settled out, then we brought in, and, you know, Taylor Adams has been a phenomenal, you know, liaison, you know, from city staff with us. Then we brought in the departments that we knew that was going to be vetted through once it went to the planning department preemptively to talk. We had police, we had code enforcement, who else we have there? We had a number of parks and recs. You know, because once again, you know, do we want food trucks that mount trash more for certain events that might be beneficial? But then how were we going to be able to do that? Very complex situation. And we're trying to come up with a win-win situation on this. And Kay has been phenomenal in crafting and trying to figure out what other cities do, good practices. But ultimately, what this comes down to is fairness and really fostering small business in the Virginia Beach in a way that everybody can live with and prosper.
So, Kay? Kay?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is about the proposed mobile food vending, which we're all going to call food trucks from now on. It started out as a subcommittee of process improvement. We'd like to thank Mr. Dyer and Ms. Abbott for their time and their consideration in leading forth this effort. As Mr. Dyer was talking about, it was restaurant owners, it was food truck owners, and it was people who have both, as well as the Process Improvement Committee, which was very helpful in going through many of the processes. The goal was to make it easier for food trucks to operate in the city, to reduce the multiple permits, to reduce the requirements, to make sure they were on a more fair setting. This is the first time that you all have heard the provisions of these ordinances. And so, they, they may be a little different. However, if we go through them, any comments you might have, we'd all appreciate hearing from you. We started out by defining mobile food vending. It's the sale of food at retail from a mobile food unit, a self-propelled motor vehicle or trailer from which prepared food is sold at retail, excluding a vehicle solely for the sale of ice cream or other ice confection. So, there we've gotten rid of ice cream trucks, ding, ding, ding. And for food delivery, so food delivery trucks don't count, okay? Okay, now, this is a packed slide, but let's go through it. Currently, mobile food trucks are peddlers. Peddlers was really created for those Peddlers was really created for those things that are selling goods out of a lot, an unimproved lot, a service station, the the blankets, the paintings, those kinds of things, or people who are going door-to-door, and so that's where peddling came from. It is also in the zoning ordinance. If you are a peddler, you pay for every site fifty dollars. So if you're going to three sites in a day, your permit is costing you a hundred and fifty dollars. Now, I'm gonna go over to what we propose, that's probably the easiest way to do this. We'll be mobile food vending, no more peddlers, and you'll get a permit from planning that costs you forty-five dollars a year. One permit, that's it. The license code, how you pay your taxes and your licensing, is now five hundred dollars a year. What's being proposed is a new category under the license code, which will be revenue-based, point-two percent, just like a restaurant, it will be revenue-based. Currently, we don't recognize food trucks in the CZO. We have to kind of wedge them into peddler. We did a pretty good job, but I think the time has come to recognize them. There's to be a recognized use in the CZO. Currently, you can only have one permit for six months, then you need a CUP, and you're only allowed on private property in business and industrial, RT three and office districts. What will be happening in the proposed ordinances is you're allowed on proper- private property in all zoning districts except residential, hotel, and RT one. You are allowed in residential with a building permit or a special event permit. Currently, you're allowed on public streets if you meet the provisions of Chapter thirty-three six, which says you can only be on streets that are twenty-five mile-per-hour posted, and you can't stay more than fifteen minutes. So that's made for the ice cream truck. And they will be exempted from the provisions of thirty-three six in the new ordinance. Gone over how we created peddlers, they also could be allowed in parks, municipal centers, public buildings, and other public facilities with a permit, well, actually, per- permission from the city manager, and parks and and rec are going to take a big role in that. Let's start through those. Chapter thirteen is a new chapter called mobile food vending. There will be a permit required. If you remember, again, it's forty-five dollars, you get it from planning. You have to give them your name and your address, you have to give them your vehicle information, you have to have a list of drivers that are gonna drive the truck, and you have to have certified abstracts from DMV, and you have to have liability insurance. The regulations on public and private property, either one, you can't impede traffic, you have to pick up your own trash, you can't have music from ten PM to nine AM, food is sold between five AM and midnight, there can be no additional structure, so no putting up tents, no putting up everything else, and you have to be legally parked. On public property, we also add that you can't be on the beach, the boardwalk, Atlantic Avenue, or town center, the streets that create the center of town center, and you ha- can only have two vendors within a hundred feet. On private property, you have to have permission of the owner of the property, and you can't be in setbacks. And the next chapter is Chapter eighteen. Eighteen deals with license tax schedule. Now, you're being classified as as a peddler and costs you five hundred dollars, and it requires a criminal records check from the police department in which some offenses are disqualifying. Those offenses are prior convictions for felonies or crimes of moral turpitude, which is lying, cheating, or stealing, or crimes involving fraud or misrepresentation, and these all go back for seven years. Prior convictions for driving under the influence of drugs or alcohol, refusal to take a blood or breath test, reckless driving, racing, eluding police, or leaving the scene of an accident, or having five or more negative points on your Virginia operator's license or the equivalent for an out-of-state property. The retail, they will now be retail, that's where restaurants go. They'll be treated the same as restaurants, they'll be prorated by sales, it'll be point-two-oh, and then be treated like a restaurant. Not requiring to them to get a full criminal records check because they won't be going door-to-door, they will simply be at a location. This will require a DMV record check for all drivers of the depart- of the, to the police department. We'll also be changing Chapter twenty-six, which is about peddlers and solicitors. Currently, you can't go to a public park, a city municipal city, municipal center, which is here, a city-owned or leased building or public property at the oceanfront without a city manager permit, which have not generally been issued. That's why we don't have any of these in the municipal center, at the courthouse, any of those places. Proposed is that you can go into these places with city manager permission. He will undoubtedly designate this permission to Parks and Recreation. Parks and Recreation will then run a system where they will do online reservations for the places that we have. They're working on plans to go ahead and make actual food truck venues, where they'd have electricity, where they'd have some seating, where they'd have trashcans at the public parks, as well as the municipal center, to see how that goes and see if we wish to expand that or what we need to change about that, and they are working on those plans at this time. The city zoning ordinance would have to change because we're gonna add mobile food vending. It will be a permitted use in preservation, agriculture, residential, apartment, office, business, industrial, RT three, RT four, central business district, and the oceanfront resort district. Residential will only be in conjunction with a building permit or a special event permit. Now, the next step is we still, we have the CZO amendments at Planning Commission. They are ready to go on the September Planning Commission agenda for the twelfth. After and or before that, we could always have additional public input if it's desired by council, and we believe these can come to the council in sometime of the fall. We are here to do what you all want us to do. And then we have questions and discussion.
Yes, Jim?
Thanks, I appreciate that, and I I appreciate the the work that that the two of y'all have done on this. I I have a number of questions, because I've heard not only from food truck vendors but also from folks in the restaurant industry, and we got this in our email today, I have this thing from the Restaurant Association, and I don't understand this last one, the distinction between a food truck and a mobile kitchen, so I'd be interested in figuring that out, and indicates that they want to have a meeting with John and Jessica, they probably meant Bobby and Jessica.
Yeah, I spoke to John, I'll be going.
I already went to Amanda, I think they got the wrong one. Yeah, so, I mean, that's the one thing, but there's a couple of questions I have have on this. Probably the, well, go- going through the proposed ordinance, thirteen dash nineteen B one, it says, it says that the window has to be facing a sidewalk, so does this require that it's, it can only be at a place with a sidewalk?
Uh, no, it would indicate that it would have to go on the side where the sidewalk would be if it's not there.
Okay, and then some, the setback issue, so if it's on private property, almost always parking lots and and driveways are in setbacks, so, I mean, how, I don't understand how that would work.
If you, well, it would just keep them off the street, that's the point, is not to put them in a parking lot and then have them right at the street, they would need to be in the parking lot.
Right, but it says on the setback, and so, but that kind of goes to my next, my next question about residential.
Yes, sir.
Because it it would appear, based on the way this ordinance is written, that if it's legally parked, it can be in a neighborhood.
Yes, sir, it can. It can be on any public street if it's legally parked.
That's, that's a huge, huge issue.
If it's for a special event permit.
No, in any place, any place in the city, it can be on a public street.
And and even going further than that, it indicates, and I have to find it, but but the issue with the, if you, it can be in residential if there's a building permit, and I understand that the whole idea is for like a a new development where you have a food truck.
Yes, sir.
But but I think the the loophole is I can build a deck on the back of my house, pay fifty bucks for a permit, and have food trucks there for six months until Sherry Haner figures out that I'm not really building a deck, and and cancels my permit for inactivity, but I mean, I I think that that that's an issue that that needs to be resolved, because, I mean, we we spent forty-five minutes talking about how many people can be inside of a house. If we start rolling mobile restaurants in front of those houses, I mean, I don't even want to think about the 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 stuff we're gonna have on that, so, so I think that's an area that I think needs to be addressed. Then I guess my, the other issue I have, and I understand the issue about the background checks, my my concern with that is even though they're not peddlers, if if they're gonna be in in my neighborhood or my neighbor's driveway or something like that, right now, I can go on the state police website and see where where the bad guys are, where the sex offenders are and where criminals are. We have a guy that comes to speak to our council every so often, yells and screams at us, who's on the the registry, we know who he is, we know where he works, we know where he lives. The the question that that I have is if if he works for a, or any of these guys, works for a mobile thing, that that could very easily be in a neighborhood where where I have no idea. The the other concern is if if they have committed crimes of moral turpitude, I I don't know that I I want to bring folks like that in into the neighborhood where breaking into your house or do things like that. I just, I think that that's an issue that we need to take a look at, it's not the same as going to a brick-and-mortar restaurant, and I I kind of see that as the same as as the ice cream truck, because they have those those rules because they're in the neighborhoods. May- maybe that changes if if this residential piece gets pulled out, but but I think right now, the way it's written is is, and and I commend you guys because I think it needs to be reduced. The other thing I think is ridiculous is saying only two, two trucks in a hundred-foot area. I think if if there's, if there's a place where, you know, people are gonna buy, they they don't necessarily want to just have two choices, you know, if they can fit four trucks there, you need to put four trucks. I mean, that's, that's just kind of my opinion on that, but I just, I I think this issue with the residential is is troubling, I think that needs to be resolved before it goes there, and then that I think the issues with permits, and and then frankly, the 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 requests from the Restaurant Association, have y'all, you two, go go talk to them, I think is is a good idea, because it seems like that there's, there seems to be at least some disconnect there.
Yes, Bob?
Yeah, thank you, and I I appreciate Mr. Wood's comments, obviously. This is a complex issue, let's not kid ourselves, and but the one thing we're trying to do is right the ship here, and if I, if I could recommend, yeah, well, let's have public hearings on this, you know, with that question, bring the folks forward, and Jess and I will definitely go talk to the Restaurant Association. Once again, the outcome, and once again, the concerns, that's why we're here to bring it up, and public hearings flush out, you know, you know, what's going on, listening to the people that are gonna be impacted by this is obviously a prudent idea that we should do. In the end, what do we want as an endgame on this? You know, to show that we're giving a small industry? My goodness, you know, I am an aficionado of dive, drive-ins, dive, uh, drive-ins and dives, okay, Guy Fieri, and guess what, they're going to food trucks now, they're going to gourmet food trucks out there. You know, this is part of the industry that maybe have not been so recognized in the past, but they've always been there, but, you know, and I was fair to say that maybe some of them had operating with, under the radar. This brings them to the table, this makes them an establishment as a restaurant, and of Kay, if I'm not mistaken, that also a lot of the regulations that are going on that with food sanitation and things of that nature-
Oh, yeah.
-will now be imposed on the food trucks. So, you know, I think, you know, let's, if we can just at least move forward and, but once again, conduct the meetings, meet with all the stakeholders and everything, this will give an opportunity for the food truck industry, the bricks-and-mortar people, to come together and hopefully find some consensus.
Are you saying move forward with it as-is?
No, 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 you know, I'm just saying at least, you know, I'll maybe allow it to at least start being flushed out with Planning Commission, get their recommendations and input, and we can currently have, you know, you know, public hearings on it, or we can delay it until we, whatever the council desires.
I think we need to fix the residential part at bare minimum.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we'll see what hap- let's, let's see what hap- you know, happens with the public hearings and, you know, what, and the other thing is maybe we can look at some, sorry, best practices that may be done in other cities that, you know, we can use as a template, you know, but, you know, we'll see what happens.
Jessica?
Yeah, I mean, I I agree with what Bobby's saying, and I think the big thing to, we need to definitely take away from this is we're the only city in Hampton Roads that does not, that has these kind of regulations on food trucks. If we need a proof of concept, Chesapeake is one of the most friendly to food trucks, Norfolk does it, and we're the only ones that are doing this background check thing, which frankly, I think is a civil rights violation. The other thing that I think we really need to take note of is that majority of the food truck owners in the area are women-owned businesses. We are disenfranchising people that are just trying to incubate a new business, to expand, to grow the tax revenue, all the things we talk about on a regular basis. I was under the impression, and I guess I misunderstood, that when we were talking about permitting them in residential, it was only if they were in a special event.
They could be in a special event or have a building permit, we talked about that with Mr. Bowie, and then that that doesn't really take care of the streets. Streets are not zoned in our city, so that wouldn't keep them from going on the street.
And I'm fine with addressing that, the street issue, I I don't, I don't have a problem with with us having some kind of restriction there, but the the lengths that these, that these business owners have to go through, people make mistakes in their life, and I, I cannot understand why we would hold something like theft or a nonviolent drug charge against somebody who's trying to just honestly make a day's worth. The reason people go back to lives of crime is because they can't keep themselves afloat as a regular person doing a regular job, and I honestly give the food truck owners more of a benefit of the doubt in that I think that they're vetting who they want in their trucks, because that's their livelihood. So I think, I understand that there is a, an emotional component to background checks and wanting to keep people safe, but nobody, no food truck is going into a neighborhood and luring children to them. They're gonna go park in a driveway or a yard and serve like a caterer would for a special event, and I I just, I think it's very important, you know, that we we consider that, and I, like I said, I don't want them on the, on the, you know, the neighborhood streets just doling out food, but I I think we we've got a, we give restaurants a benefit of the doubt. I don't think anybody's been to a McDonald's and asked them, excuse me, do you have a felony? I I would venture to say that nobody has questioned the server who's serving them their hamburger.
Well, you have a choice to go to, but I see what you're saying.
You have a choice to go to a food truck.
Yes, Bob?
Uh, this is mobile food vending. If they're gonna be permitted in these other zoning categories, I'm assuming that's fiberite, it's not a conditional use permit, can can there be a sort of a permanent food truck at a location, or do they have to move around?
There is no provision in the ordinance at this time that would require them to move after so much time.
Say that again, Kay.
They can stay as long as they wish to stay at a certain location, there's nothing in here that requires them to move.
They wouldn't be able to stay, though, they they have, they have to, they, most of them have some kind of rental that they go and they reload their food and 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 do other things, they they couldn't, that's the whole point of a food truck, is that it's low overhead.
And if I can say, I I noticed that they service a lot of the corporate areas, especially where folks can't get out to lunch sometimes, and a lot of times, I'll see a different food truck there every day. They ha- I think they have a informal system of rotating, because if you have, if I can use tacos every day for two months or a long time, that's, that's not gonna be something that people are gonna want. Variety, and and it seems like they're, they're in a lot of ways self-policing, and they communicate well among each other to make sure there's fairness and equity.
Rosemary?
I think that the current conditions are really arduous, and I'm really glad to see us make it more friendly to these business owners. I mean, this is, what they're asking today is really crazy, and I see this as a starting point. It's always good to have a place to, and I know y'all have worked really hard on this, and it's good to have a starting, starting point, but now we need to have more input and massage it and get it to be exactly what we want it to be, so I I think y'all did a really good job, but we just need to find, do the fine-tuning, so thank you for doing this, I know it was hard work.
No, and I concur with you, and I think, you know, that's part of our, with with improving any process, it's good, the more people you bring to the table, the better, and and the, and the, the outcome should be win-win that everybody can live with, but not only benefits the industry, but, you know, this is also tax revenues coming in and, you know, things of that nature, and they supply a need, you know, construction sites and-
Bobby could use- Probably could use here at the municipal center, there's not many places to eat here.
And, you know, look at Why Not Wednesday, how successful that is, you know, right at town center. And Why Not Pizza has a huge food truck there, you know, that, where they sell food and it attracts people. So, you know, once again, let's create the win-win, I appreciate your comments.
Yes, Ben.
The Restaurant Association was included in the talks-
Well, Bill, Bill Dillon was represented there, and, uh, you know, from, from what I understand, Ben, he was going back and giving them some feedback. But once again, yeah, I think it, you know, we can't just say, okay, we had a limited amount of people, we gotta broaden, you know, the horizon to bring more people and bring the industry, so, uh, Jess and I'll be glad to meet with them.
Oh, I'm, yeah, I'm very happy.
And let's have that public hearing and, and bring everybody in. You know, not everybody's gonna be on board, but I think if we understand and that we went through a deliberate process and, you know, and that it's not gonna be as onerous as people might think or that it competition that people, I think this can turn into a true win-win. A lot of restaurants are using food truck, uh, trucks that, you know, bolster the bottom line.
Yes, John.
Just that one observation, I will assume that the authority will be delegated by letter-
Yes, sir.
And that be part, part of the delegation, that the guidelines that will be applied will be published and will be on the website, so there'll be, all the public will know the guidelines that Parks and Recreation is using relative to the use of public property.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Ben.
What are we agreeing to right now?
I don't, I think what we're-
Nothing.
I just wanted to make that clear.
They're gonna go back and talk to the Restaurant Association.
They're, they're still gonna do some talking with different people that are involved.
I was just gonna say, so I, our plan, Bobby, if this works for you, and of course the council, we'll meet with the Restaurant Association and report, report back what we have there. I guess that's in two weeks. Um, Kay, I don't think there's any chance we'll make the 12th, is there?
The 12th of September.
Of September for planning.
Um, only if you come up with, the only thing that has to go to planning is the, is the zoning.
Right, okay, but that's got that art, that residential piece.
It does, and we'll, we'll need to look at that.
And we can have a public hearing.
What I, what I was gonna say, maybe we should ho- you and I should host a town hall or such, that way, 'cause I know 757 Eat the Streets would, would most likely like to be invol- I'm sorry, I didn't see you, would like to be involved in that session, and just so you all know, Eat the Streets is basically the Restaurant Association version for food trucks, so that's, I think, meeting with both of those would be great.
We'll get them to the table.
Okay.
All right. Everybody through with that one? Good.
Move on.
Hey, John.
Hey.
Next item, Mr. Hanson.
Yes, sir. Uh, we're gonna reengage on, um, on where we're at on our city hall design. This is a two-part briefing today. You're going to have an open session and then an executive session, security aspects of the new building. Mr. Tom Nicholas and the whole engineering team and architectural team are here, and with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Tom, our facility engineer.
Afternoon, Mayor Jones, ladies and gentlemen, members of City Council. So, we're at the design stage in this project where it gets to be a lot of fun. Uh, you know, y'all endured the planning process and, and our programmatic studies and space studies, and then we got through concepts and conceptual design, schematic design, now we're into design development, and we're far enough along now where they're putting all the details on the building, in the building information model, which is being done in Revit. So, the slides you were given is, is not representative of the design of the building, because you can't really take what's being done in a Revit design and, and convert it to PowerPoint slides. Those are reference slides that do address a number of the concerns that were voiced previously, and we'll talk through those. But wanna start off with something a little more fun. With me today from Mosley, again, Tony Bell, Josh Bennett, and Michael Gibson, who have been at all of our meetings. Bruce McCloy is here from Timmins, doing all of our civil site work, and on the facility side, Kevin Jensen, Tim Oliver, and Barry Shockley, and we're the folks who are pretty much taking care of this building. But Josh is gonna drive the bus, and Tony's gonna tell you a little about it, and we're gonna walk you through this building. Uh, we've got a couple of scenarios set up, but if, if at any time you'd say, "Hey, I'd, I'd like to look up there," or "I'd like to walk over there," we will do that. And, and as the design model becomes more definitive, really, within the next month or two, uh, and the final product is done, you will literally be able to go in any room in the building and, and look at any feature. But, uh, having said that, let me turn it over to Tony, and he'll give you a little background on exactly what you're looking at.
Okay. Let me preface, um, the presentation by stating that you're gonna see a lot of monochromatic spaces today. We haven't selected colors of walls, we haven't selected colors of carpet, we haven't selected furniture styles or fabrics. We haven't selected furniture quite yet, but all those decisions are down the road. Now, what you're seeing today is merely a placeholder in terms of furniture, in terms of walls, in terms of casework, which is gonna be outfitting the spaces. So what we're gonna do is take basically three tours through the building. The first one, we're gonna go in the front door and into the Commissioner and Treasurer's public counter area. Josh is showing you right now the, the main lobby and looking up through the cupola, and that's a, a real cupola that wouldn't light that interior lobby. So this is the Commissioner and Treasurer's public counter space. They would basically face each other, and citizens would be there to transact business. Now, the detailing of these counters is not yet complete, but you can see the general configuration and the general volume of the space. Once again, light fixtures have not been selected, but you can see the general placement has been determined. So we're walking now back into the lobby, we're gonna walk up the stairs to the second floor lobby space. Josh is a very good navigator, having a lot of experience doing video gaming in his former career.
Yeah, you just, you just-
I set him up.
More of the zombies.
That's what happens when the game ends.
So we're gonna, right in front of us is, is chambers. We're gonna go to the left and go into the new room 234. This is the way the public would enter the room. There would be tiered seating there overlooking your council space. Uh, there'd be monitors on the wall, you see those? There'd be a podium at the front. There'd be chairs around the table when we're done, obviously. You know, we're-
Stand up.
You're not gonna be standing up.
Bubble desk.
No, ma'am. But all those decisions are down the road. Once again, these are just placeholders, you can see basically the count of the chairs, the general configuration of the space, the volume of the space.
But where, where's the media go in this area?
Right, right where we're standing right now.
Okay.
Where's the handicap?
Walk back out the hallway and show the handicap.
Right, right there. Councilman Moss. So that, that open space where you, where you think their chairs would be, that's where the wheelchair-bound citizens would sit.
Is it on either side or just the one?
Just on the one side. But you could go up the ramp and have a seat at the top as well. Okay? But on the lower level, it's just on one side, on the upper level, it's just on one side.
We have three handicapped figures. But more than that, we have to accommodate it on the main floor, correct?
Right, thank you.
So Jessica was putting in the tip.
Now, as Josh is going in, we're going into chambers now. This is where the public would enter chambers. You see your 300 seats. There's space for handicap there at the top of the tier, and then there's a sloped surface down to the front, and you've got a handicap seating in that front row as well. There's no handicap seating on the slope, obviously. You have staff seating there in the front. Remember from our last design, we pushed that back a little bit. We have a single podium located in the center with the possibility of locating pairing podiums at the end of each aisle. So this is the city, or this is the media space, so move up one tier, and Josh will show you where the city attorney was sitting, Councilman.
You all did the Suffolk City Hall, didn't you?
We did not do the Suffolk City Hall, we did the Suffolk Courthouse.
Suffolk Courthouse, okay, gotcha.
Yes, sir.
Have you, have you done an acoustic assessment of your spaces? Has that been acoustically assessed?
They will be acoustically assessed as we move forward.
Okay.
And, and the materials on the walls will be best determined and, and selected based on what the acoustical performance is required, whether it's reflective surface or absorptive surface.
All right, can you show the media spot again there?
There's a couple, are there, couple of media spots?
Well, we've, we've selected the ones on, on this side, here, for media.
For cameras.
For cameras, right. Um, we've also discussed having cameras at the very back of the chambers, so they would shoot down, much as you, you would shoot from the public. And then there'd be fixed camera positions, much as you have here in 234 and in your council chambers today. So this was mainly for media who are having a handheld camera.
But we'd have plugins, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, for output.
I like the glass wall in the back.
Yeah, the thought there being that if you, if the, if it's a big, heavy, uh, lot of discussion-type item, you could have people actually standing or seating in that waiting vestibule or in the lobby proper. And they would all be able to see the, the proceedings that are going on.
Will there, will there be a, I don't know if I can be too jettled, but will there be a feed, like there are congressional hearings, a kind of media feed where people who don't have cameras can download the feed?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yes, and with the number of public meeting rooms that we have throughout the facility, this is obviously an operational decision for the city to make, but if it's, uh, an item which a lot of public is coming to attend, you could actually feed whatever media to those rooms and have public sitting in those rooms as well.
And that was the clerk's space, right? The clerk's space.
So this is the manager's space.
May I ask a question?
Is there Mr. Attorney?
So, so a lot of times when a citizen wants to pass documents to the council, we direct them to give them to the clerk. How would that work in this space? If, uh, if somebody at the podium wants something passed out for the consideration of the council, how does that work?
They would hand it to the clerk here at this position, and then the clerk would hand it up to the council members.
So clerk would walk around and hand it up?
Or hand it up over the counter.
Manager.
Walking behind, walking behind the manager. This is a standing position from council seats.
Where do you envision monitor?
Well, determination has not yet, yet been made, but there would be monitors for the public along each wall.
On the backside, there.
On the, on the, on this-
But how about for the council members to observe a presentation?
They would probably be on, in the, every individual council member's desk surface.
Gonna have recessed monitors, right?
Sir.
It's gonna be recessed into the circles of the desk, is that correct?
Has, has not yet determined, Councilman Moss, but it could be recessed, or it could be, uh, a low profile.
Would that be a preference to recess?
Well, it's up to the council, I just know, I've been to a lot of meetings where it is recessed. But it can be either way, you know, what's cheap is good.
Yeah, the lesser expensive alternative is that, is more of a low profile, and would still give you good legibility.
I have to try and show the council, yeah?
Yes. So we're gonna leave the building, going back, back through the lobby.
Well, Tony, will there be any backup? Will there be any access-
Stop, stop, Josh.
-from the, from the meeting space into where you can open up and actually enlarge the-
Yes.
In other words, we talked about the glass area in the back being able to open up and have even, uh, suppose we had one of those mega meetings where you had more than 300 attendees, are we gonna have some collapsible panels?
Yes, so what you see here, panels here could be opened up, that's desired. In addition, the ones from the vestibule into the lobby could be operable. That decision has not yet been made, but obviously that has a, a little bit of a different take as far as the acoustical properties of the space, but it's very easy to make that first, um, more operable.
So, in that, um, kind of pre-functionary or whatever it is on the outside, how much space is out there?
You see, you've got about a dozen chairs now, and you could fit two more rows of chairs quite easily and still have good circulation into and out of council chambers.
So you, you could, you could put another 40 people sitting out there comfortably-
Yes, sir.
Looking at, looking at a, a feed on a monitor or something like that.
Well, they, they would have a, a full view into the space through this glass wall here.
But could they hear what's going on?
Yes, oh yes. So, so acoustically, we would have, um, sound amplification into this space, and also the capability of putting it into the lobby, and then through some other key spaces throughout the building. So, as we discussed earlier, you know, if you've got an overflow event where you wanna maybe take some of the large training spaces that are on the front unsecured portion of the building-
Mm-hmm.
-and put the public in them, they will already have monitors, they will already have chairs and seating, you could open those up for the public and let them view of the proceedings from those spaces. We've got several large conference rooms for that. Josh is taking in one, so.
So those are the publicly accessible conference rooms on the second floor at the front of the building, which could also be set up with seats and video monitors and sound if there was really an extreme circumstance of a lot of people. And that's the whole lobby size, it's huge, love.
Just one quick, in that space, which I call the ante-chamber before you go into the council chambers-
Yes, sir.
-'cause we've talked about this, allowing people to come in to meetings in a kiosk and register to speak without, you know, self-registering versus having to have a clerk out there, is that where that would be provided for?
It could be provided for either there or downstairs.
Okay, I just, I just know that's been talked about, the ability for people to self-register to speak, and that makes sense. Thank you.
It would probably make sense to have it in multiple places.
Right, I'm just asking, just a question, making sure it hasn't been lost.
And with our ability to secure-
If you're hungry.
-to secure room 234, unlike here at your existing city hall, we could even fill room 234 and allow its monitors to benefit your citizens as well. But that gives you another 50 seats, Councilman Moss, you were asking about having that additional seating.
Yep.
Going on top of the, of the 300 that are in council chambers, you've got another 90, 100 spaces that are directly accessible, one, just basically one space away. Shall we go back outside?
Well, just, can, can you make that statement, so everybody hears what you told us?
So, the software that we're moving forward with allows for online, um, sign-ups for speakers, um, and there'll be multiple locations throughout the building. That hasn't quite been determined, um, but, yeah, so, I think it's gonna be by mobile device that's just locked onto a stand.
So there you see building two to your right.
So, the idea is to show the difference here between the separation of public entrance and what the council entrance and the staff entrance is.
Well, on this diagram, it showed that there's, the only entrance for the public is the front. Is that correct?
No, the front and the side, the northwest side.
All right. That, that one picture didn't show that, but you said it wasn't accurate, so that's why I was just asking. Josh, can we go out front and look back at those entrances from the parking lot?
Yes, sir.
Just so that the council members can see the two entrances, uh, available, one, the, on the east would be this public entrance, and then the, the staff entrance.
Walk back up.
So we are looking at the west face of the building right now. The entrance to the north would be the public entrance, the entrance to the south would be the staff entrance. And what we did was we actually turned the stair to the south entrance, so our faces do south, so it's not quite as inviting as the north entrance. The north entrance stair is gonna face the parking lot directly, so it's gonna be immediately evident as you're walking up to the building, that's where I go. Does that make sense? The other, we, we turn 90 degrees, so it's not as inviting. But both would have equal accessibility in terms of ADA, both would have, uh, ramps, and both would have stairs. Obviously, there will be trees in the parking lot at the completed facility, so just not in there yet. The door you see there is to the fire pump room. This is the staff entry. Basically, everything on the right is service spaces for the building, electrical, mechanical, um, loading dock spaces. This is sort of the staff vestibule here. This is the secured area, okay? The public will not be in this area. And this is the stair which is in the middle of the building on the south wall, on the south face. There's two elevators immediately adjacent to it, one for freight, one for personnel. Now Josh is gonna take you through the city manager, mayor, city council suite.
From the back to the front.
So if you were entering the building from the parking lot through the back staff entry, this is how you would enter the suite. What you see here is the, the deputy city manager's assistance workstations. This is a deputy city manager's office. Once again, the deputy city manager will have a chair in the completed facility.
If they're, if they're nice?
If they're nice. This is the city manager's conference room. Be monitors on the wall. Now we're into the city manager's office, which immediately to the north of that space. So this will be one of the council offices.
Representative furniture.
Right, right. We have not, once again, we have not determined what the furniture is, how it is to be configured, the fabrics, the colors, the materials. We're all gonna be talking about that very, very soon, okay?
I remember I didn't enjoy third-person cheater, first-person cheater games.
All right, so, stop one second, Josh. So, right now, we're looking back at the public lobby. So this is sort of the ante-room that you come in if you're coming to see the mayor or the city manager or any council member. You would come to this space. This would be roughly equivalent to the space you have now where you come in off the corridor. So if you're a staff member waiting to go into room 234 or waiting to go into chambers, you could come in here and it would, in theory, be separated from the public. Although the public could walk into this door. Now, those two doors you see to the right, okay? Those are, one is to the conference room and one is back into the suite itself. This is a small conference room that has both a front-of-house door and a back-of-house door. If you have a, a citizen who is somewhat irate and don't wanna bring them back into the, the suite itself, we, we can meet with them here, okay? But there's also a conference room back in the suite proper that you could take them into. And then we're back into 234. So any questions about any of that? Josh, you wanna take them to the exterior?
So dizzy.
It's like my grandchild's video games when they come up.
Oh yeah. They're much more detailed, Bobby.
Got away from me.
So, with this software, you can basically look at the building in a floor plan nature, see the configuration of all the spaces.
That's really amazing.
Obviously, the parking lot is there to the right. The stormwater pond is there to the left. What you're seeing there is the first floor plan. And you can highlight on any space, and that space can be identified. That's the treasurer's public, that's the IT rooms for the treasurer. Interview rooms for the commissioner. So there's second floor, you can see council chambers. Room 234 immediately to the, to the right of that there. These are those meeting rooms we've, we've discussed. We're basically the entire city to utilize. Josh is gonna go down one, go up one more floor. This is the third floor. Obviously, you have the auditor, the volunteers' office, budget management, media communications, finance. Okay, let's go through the slides quickly there, Josh. So I think everyone has a copy of this. We're just gonna review this in a cursory nature. We're basically at completion of design development phase, 65%. Since we last talked, we've moved through the design a little further. We look at the site plan, the exterior design, overall building floor plans, then we'll look specifically at the suite for council, city manager, mayor, and then go through a schedule overview. Once again, we have the public entry from the north, the staff entry from the, the southwest. Accessible ramps at all those public entries as well as the staff entry. 21 access, 21 spaces in the motor court, two of which are accessible. 153 spaces immediately to the west of building two, and then 303 spaces to the west of city hall. And once again, the net parking is zero. You know, we are reconstructing only those spaces that we displaced as a result of the construction of the new city hall. This is the front facade from the drop-off. The west facade from the parking lot. You see the public entry here in the foreground. Overhead view, building one is on our right, building two is on our, excuse me, building one is on our left, building two is on our right. The new city hall in the center. This is a street view, Courthouse Drive. And then a view showing both the existing city hall and the new city hall in context to one another. Once again, the materials will be complementary, if not identical, as far as the brick, as far as the paint color, as far as the roof material, things of this nature.
Are you elevating the base floor by any amount to account for change? And is it gonna be three feet higher? Is it basic, basic elevation?
It will. It will be higher than grade, roughly equivalent to what the existing city hall is now. So once again, the commissioner and the treasurer on the first floor of the building with public meeting spaces shown in gray. Clerk, the attorney, and the mayor's suite. The volunteer, auditor, communications, budget management, and finance on the third floor. Let's take a quick spin through the, the mayor, city council suite and the changes that we've made since the last meeting. So we asked at the last meeting, what is the average width of the seats? What are the average aisle widths? You see here, they're indicated, you know, the aisles are roughly five feet. The average seat width is 23 inches. There's six wheelchair spaces distributed throughout the council chambers, four in the front, two left, two right, and then two in the middle.
How does 23 inches compare to a standard airline seat?
It is wider.
Is it two inches wider, an inch wider? I'm trying to get, I fly a lot, so I know what that is. I don't sit out often, so I'm trying to understand.
Obviously, that's gonna vary a little bit, Councilman Moss, from airline to airline and also from first class to coach.
But I'm talking about standard coaches. I'm just asking relative to demography of people and like, where does that stand in terms of the...
It, it would be what we refer to as above-average, okay?
Very good.
So it's not, it's not a large bariatric seat, but neither is it the most narrow seat required, allowed by code.
Very good.
Is that fair?
Fair enough, just trying to get a feel.
America's 18.7 inches.
Thank you. The worldwide web internet has served us well again.
Now, I can vision five more inches, I'm happy with that. I'm just, I'm looking for a benchmark.
So, there was another question also about doors. You've got a pair of 3O doors here, a pair of 3O doors here, and they obviously align directly with the doors out to the lobby. So this is the suite proper. We've got our, our council offices. We reconfigured the, the kitchen and the break rooms. Everyone else is pretty much as, we, we did move the conference room as to what you had seen at the last meeting.
We gave the mayor a door into that front conference room.
That's right.
That was a big thing.
So here, and this is a, a conference room that could be accessed by the public, but also acc, access from what we refer to as back-of-house directly by the mayor. And obviously, this is a secured door. So the deputy city manager is on the south wall with the conference room. The city manager has a, a door into that conference room as well as to the corridor and to the executive assistant. Three doors into the city manager's office. As far as the schedule, we are about right here, completing the design development phase. We'll then move into what's referred to as CDs or the construction documents phase. And that's the phase where we're putting all the details on the project. So we are at that time selecting the carpet, selecting the paint color, selecting the character and nature of the finishes. We're coordinating all the different systems, whether they be electrical, mechanical, security. And we're moving forward to look to wrap those up in the winter and get the project out for bid in the spring.
When you say you're doing that, are you looking at the life cycle cost of your selections, like going to carpet versus going terrazzo versus something over the life of the building? So you can come back and show us why the choices you made over the life cycle and discount of the most cost-effective choices?
We are indeed. So with it, with the, with regard to the example you brought up, Councilman Moss, if you talk with anyone, terrazzo is the most cost-effective life cycle product available because it basically lasts forever. You never have to replace it. But if you, it's expect, thank you, you, you took the words right out of my mouth. If you only have $5 in your pocket, you can't buy the $30 product, no matter how good it is. So we need to balance that with the city's budget.
I understand that, but that's a balancing I wanna know that we have the option to make because ultimately, if you tell me I'm replacing carpet every 10 years, carpet also takes viruses and everything else that gets into carpet, which is why we usually take it out of our houses.
Right.
Then you have to look at all those things in conjunction. Just know the choice. I'm not saying what the right choice is. I just wanna make sure the council is going to have the model that allows us to see what the trade space is and have that discussion with the public because ultimately, they're the ones paying.
That's right.
Pay me now or pay me later. I just wanna make sure we know what the, where the pay happens.
And we will.
All right, thanks.
So we, we evaluate all these decisions to make sure we get the best value of every dollar that is spent.
Yes, Henry.
Yes, ma'am.
That kinda goes along with what I was thinking about as far as energy saving, green certification kinds of things. Does that, has that, are you...
Yeah, so, as sort of an umbrella over all of these decisions, we are tasked with making the building with pursuit of lead certification. So we are pursuing that. We're looking at different materials and different systems with regard to that. But driving also back to, you know, what is your day-to-day operational costs? And also, what is your staff able to maintain on a long-term basis? So we're having a lot of discussions with your facilities folks on what they have had good experiences with today. They're doing a lot of lighting replacements in your existing facilities. We're gonna use that knowledge as we move forward into the new city hall so that you're not replacing fixtures before they expire, okay? Any other question? Yes, ma'am?
Well, just sort of a comment. Of course, you know, some of us are out there now hearing from the public quite a lot. And I'm really kind of concerned that we still haven't gotten past that thing of why are we building a city hall now? And, you know, I think my understanding, of course, is that we costed out. What if we waited until this one decided to not operate anymore on its HVAC and then we had to suddenly get mobile stations?
Modular, right.
Everybody. What was that cost? If somebody could just kind of go back a little bit in, in all of this process of, you know, why it's important that we do it at this time and, and the comparisons of the cost of not doing it to gambling that it's going to last and then it doesn't, and that kind of thing. I know that information is there, I know we've had it, but it would be nice to have that in a simple, one-page document or something.
I think there's a more fundamental debate, and that's why it's a good thing this decision will be till January because we'll know who's making it, is to whether or not we shouldn't be operating out of trailers and other things, renovating this building like the Pentagon and moving back in and not building a new building at all. I think that's the issue, and I think the public at the election will have a chance to decide who makes the decision of building or not. But I think that's the real fundamental question, is that with the public.
But I think we, we have that data of the comparisons of those costs and...
We do.
That's why we went ahead to this level of design.
Just understand that that wouldn't be a cost decision. So, if I could predict when this building would fail, we could have very accurate data and we could make that decision. We have had several instances this winter where we had major pipe breaks and we were within maybe four or five hours of a crack across a floor dropping off the entire HVAC. And within about four hours, the building wouldn't be usable. That's a different problem when you need to move city hall to temporary facilities with eight hours of notice. And so that's, that, we are in that risk profile every day in this building where a system electrically or mechanically could fail and could take us with no power or no heating ventilation, air conditioning, and we're not gonna go lease stuff in advance of that. So we would, we would have a hard time dealing.
But we could move into those trailers a lot faster.
What'd you say, John?
I said we could, if that's true, while this is all under construction, that could happen. The probability is the same whether we build a new building or not. Your risk factor in this building is the same because you're in it while you're building a new. So if you wanna avoid the risk quickly, this is a political decision. This is not an engineering question. This is a public priority decision.
You're making it a political decision.
Because it is.
Well, I disagree.
That's why you're running for office tonight.
But if I go out and I spend four million...
Boy, you're not running for mayor, you still have time. You could get in the race.
If you're not in my race, I'm not in yours.
We did have that cost, and we were good to set that up.
And I could go out and...
If you would just reconstruct that for us because I, I think what we saw was that that was lost cost.
It is. If I go rent three to four million dollars worth of facilities as temporary facilities, at the end of the day, I move out of that and I've bought nothing. I've spent three to four million dollars of public dollars and they have not enhanced a facility.
But we have not used $47 million of debt that we could have used for something else, and we're gonna still borrow money for this building but pay it out of a different fund. So you gotta look at this as a much bigger picture of our choices because our biggest and scariest resource under our current policy is the allocation of our debt capacity against our policy. That's the most critical asset. And is it going to new buildings or is it going to flooding? We're picking new buildings. I don't hear the public identifying with that choice.
But I think the public needs to be given the facts, which is the cost either way. And I just wanted, I know we had that.
I'd be more than happy to put that back in the paper and, and let you all have that for your discussion.
All right, what else?
And why we didn't renovate this building?
Is this it? Is this a presentation?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Hanson, next is the housing and property conditions survey.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for having us today. We have some good news to tell you about today, and I'm gonna give you a little bit of introduction and then Wells Fried, our code enforcement administrator, is gonna give you the details. Our department's been conducting surveys of the condition of housing in the city since 1990, and we think it's a critical piece of information to understand how our property is, the realist, the residential real estate in the city. You know, we consider one of our missions to maintain vibrant, well-maintained neighborhoods without blight. And we think we can measure that through these surveys. And in addition, these surveys are important because we have a program called rental inspections, which is in part based on the condition of housing. And so we're gonna use this data combined with other data to review that, that program as well and bring that back to you. So, in this survey, we, we actually looked at 10,245 different properties, only detached homes, duplexes, and townhomes because they have, they're really, and we did not look at apartments, condominiums, and mobile homes. We did this with our code enforcement staff because we are essentially examining for violations of the property maintenance code and the building code on the outside of buildings. And we also had supervisors going and, and doing some quality assessment surveys. We did this totally computerized, and we did not issue violations as a result of the survey. That was a separate activity. We did not go and survey your house and then give you notice. It was a random sample that, to the greatest extent possible, is designed to be statistically valid over housing type, housing age, and housing value. And we used a great tool called Microsoft Power BI to help analyze it. The city's data and information office management, and information management office did this for us. We don't have that analytical capability, but we're, we think it's done totally correctly. So I'm gonna turn it over to Wells to report to you on the results of the survey.
Good afternoon, and thank you for having us in. I'll make sure this doesn't take any longer than your short-term rental discussion took. No, this'll take about 10 minutes, so. This is the rating scale that you see here. It's a four-tier, tier scale that we use to rate structures, and it's the same scale that we've been using since 1990. I'm gonna show you examples of, of properties in each of these categories in a second. So in addition to the structure ratings, we are now taking into account whether there are property maintenance code violations on the properties when we conduct these surveys. This can be overgrown grass, trash on the property, junk vehicles, graffiti, and fences in disrepair. So on the left, we have a standard structure with no building maintenance code violations present at the time of the survey. That would be rated as standard, of course. And, and next to that, on the right, is a deficient structure that has some minor damage to the vinyl siding up at the right corner. that has some minor damage to the vinyl siding up at the right corner. Deficient structures have minor violations that are easily corrected during the normal course of regular maintenance. And that's a majority of what we find during these surveys when we do find something that's not in a standard condition. This is a deteriorated structure. This has rotted wood there on the trim and soffit area, likely emitting rain into the interior portions of the home. So deteriorated structures have more severe building code violations that are not as easily corrected during the normal course of maintenance. And finally, we, we have dilapidated structures. Very few of those happy to report. We only had four. I'm sorry. The wrong button there. We only had four of those. We're on eight. Thank you. So we only had four of those during the course of the survey. Several of those were fire damaged properties, which were already under, going under some repairs. So dilapidated structures are what we consider unsafe or uninhabitable. This one in particular was demolished back in two thousand and ten. And last, we have the exterior property rating to record the presence of any property maintenance code violations. Overgrown grass in excess of ten inches, the accumulation of trash, any junk vehicles or fences that are falling down or disrepair. So the results, here are the overall results that we found for the building ratings only, for the housing conditions. So right at about eighty-six percent of the structures we surveyed were in standard condition. No building code violations present. Thirteen percent had minor code violations. They were noted as being deficient. And then we had less than a half a percent that were deteriorated or dilapidated, a total of thirty of those. Each of those were actually further investigated and action taken on the dilapidated and deteriorated structures. So this chart shows the combined housing and property results. This includes the premises assessment as well for any property maintenance code violations. Seventy-five percent of the ten thousand two hundred and forty-five properties we looked at had no violations at all. Eleven percent had property violations only. The structures were in good repair. There was some maintenance on the lawn that was necessary. And nine percent had building violations. Five percent had both. So looking at twenty-eight years of our housing condition survey results, back in nineteen ninety, the results showed that we were at about seventy-nine percent standard buildings in the city. Here we are twenty-eight years later. We're showing a seven percent improvement to eighty-six percent. And we feel that this is an indication that the efforts of the code enforcement office to ensure that our housing is safe and well-maintained are working. When comparing housing statistics from nineteen ninety to two thousand and eighteen, you can see a thirty-nine percent increase in the total number of houses and a five hundred and thirty-eight percent increase in the total number of houses that are thirty years or older. So despite the increases in the total housing and the continually aging housing stock, we're still able to achieve that seven percent increase in our housing, standard housing. So some more, we've broken down the results a little, and a couple other ways here, which I'll go over with you, and this is by decade built. So on the left, the chart shows a percentage of total housing in the city within these ranges. And the chart on the right is going to show the percentage of non-standard housing that occurred during the survey of that thirteen or fourteen percent that we found that was non-standard. So housing that was built in the nineteen eighties represents thirty-two percent of our total housing. And forty point five percent of the housing surveyed with building code violations. Another forty percent of the non-standard housing was found in the sixties and seventies decades combined. And here are the results by value range. So what we found here was that houses valued between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars represent twenty-nine percent of our total housing and forty-six percent were found in the non-standard category. The two hundred to three hundred thousand dollar range represents thirty-five percent of our total housing and thirty-five percent of what we found in non-standard condition. And then last, we have the results broken down by housing type. And as you can see, the majority of our housing from the chart on the left, almost eighty percent is single-family detached housing. Sixteen percent is townhouses. And the majority of the non-standard housing was found in the single-family homes category, twenty-three percent townhouses. Other types of housing was very minimal. This is how the results break down in the Power BI system. The map shows, the dots on the map represent every location that a non-standard unit was found. And again, that total was about thirteen and hundred and fifty, I think. And using the Power BI system, you can manipulate the results and the graphs by clicking on different sections of the charts. It's a very robust system. We'll be using that for a lot of our analysis in the future. So we are currently working on an area-based analysis, which will allow us to evaluate the housing conditions down to the census tract, block group level. And as Andy discussed earlier in the intro, we'll use that data to reevaluate our rental inspection district here in the near future. And if there's any additional reporting council would like to see, we can look at that as well. In conclusion, neighborhood revitalization and addressing problems associated with aging housing is one of council's top priorities. Despite the significant increases in size and age of our housing stock, we're still able to see improvement in the conditions, which we think is fantastic. How do we explain this? Well, owners are taking relatively good care of their properties, which is great. When they are not, code enforcement works to address any code violations. The inspectors are doing an excellent job of responding to complaints and patrolling the area, the entire city proactively for code violations. There's a couple of stats up here. About ten thousand building violations are cited each year and about twenty-five thousand property violations each year. In addition, the city is doing an excellent job of maintaining public safety, infrastructure and facilities. And for those who are unable to afford to reinvest or maintain their properties, our department is working to assist them and connect them to resources to help. So that's it for me. Not as long as a, yes, Mr. Moss.
I want to compliment you on the statistic part of this year, but is the methodology and statistical significance true for all the years of the twenty-eight years?
That, that has varied some. Andy can give you a little more history on that, but for the past three years, it's been very similar.
Yes, sir. We've always tried to do that. We've had different technical expertise available to us. One, the one time we did the first one, we actually looked at every house. We, we spent a massive amount of time and paper in the nineteen ninety survey, but generally we have made every effort to do a statistically valid one.
Well, a good point. You know, I talked earlier about census tract. We were talking about short-term rentals. Well, this is an example of, obviously, we have the database. We have the property. So you really can, there's a lot to learn from that. So that may be a tool that may give us some insight as we look to how to define neighborhoods. Because census tracts generally recognize a lot of subdivisions for lots of reasons. So it may be a very helpful tool, Mr. Mayor. If we do that next step to use it, to productively use data we've collected. Appreciate it very much. A very nice presentation.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Ms. Henley?
Did you say when this particular survey was taken?
This was, this started in March of this year.
So it's pretty recent, that name. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll go to city council liaison reports. Anybody have a liaison report?
I guess I do.
Yes, Mr. Wood.
During, during the council break, as I represented the city in Vibling in Germany for the sister city signing. And the interesting thing is the connection between steel and the city in both locations. And we had the opportunity to visit, steel has two factories in Vibling, which is where they're headquartered. Interesting thing is we produce about three times as much in Virginia Beach than they do in Germany, which, which was interesting. And when you walk into the steel plant in Vibling, it's like walking into one of Virginia Beach. Everything's the same except for the language on there. But the interesting thing also, and the steel family is very active in the arts. And I believe there's, there's an effort now for them to contribute. They just contributed public art in Vibling and they now want to contribute some public art in Virginia Beach. So that's something that's going to be ongoing. So that's kind of an interesting, good thing out of that.
Well, thank you. I want to thank you for doing that trip, not only Sister Cities trip, but it's also an economic development trip on a part of the city. And Mr. Wood volunteered to do that and take that on and it was a great, great deal of help personally to me.
Thank you.
And I know that the council appreciates his efforts in that regard. Anybody else?
I don't have a liaison report, but I have a comment. We're there.
Yes, please.
I just wanted to pass kudos on to, we had, I had a constituent reach out to us about some trash at the overpass on Providence Road. And she wrote me back a letter that was very, very kind. She mentioned a Brian, no last name, but Brian did an excellent job. And then I just wanted to give thanks to Tom Leahy and his staff for coming and meeting with me at Kemp's Green Neighborhood about traffic situations. So both, both people had made special notice to me and I just wanted to pass that along.
Okay, any more liaison reports? If not, we'll go to council comments. Ms. Henley.
Yes, well, we had the first in our summer series of presentations about the sea level rise and, and recurrent flooding, especially as it impacts the Alamooral watershed. I think the first one was very successful and you all had a CD in your packet. John Moss suggested that. And so we did, I think I've looked at mine about three times. I think there was so much information in there. And of course, the purpose of this is to raise awareness among our citizens of all these issues that we are looking at and increase the knowledge so that we'll be better prepared to deal with the recommendations that we're going to be, be facing. But it wasn't our intent that this was going to coincide with a very extreme weather event that showed the uniqueness of this watershed. And I think that raised the awareness of everybody to a great extent. And the thing that is so difficult, though, is the confusion between just regular rain events and what can be done just to deal with that kind of issue, which I think is our ongoing operations and maintenance. And, and the, and the difficulty that we have and are going to have with this watershed as we go forward. And, and what we see, of course, is the the impact of, well, in the Alamooral watershed, a prolonged southern wind. And when you couple that with a lot of rain, you've got the perfect storm. And I guess that's what we had over the last couple of weeks. And it's really, really difficult to, you know, explain all of this phenomenon to folks and the, the difference in the Alamooral. I think one of the most impressive frames in that first presentation, and I think it was done by the meteorologist, one of his, in comparing the Chesapeake Bay and its fourteen or fifteen mile mouth that allows the water to get out to the ocean to the Alamooral watershed, which in all of the Alamooral watershed, there are three very small inlets. And of course, the closest one to us is the Oregon inlet. And our water has to get all the way down there in order to, to the Atlantic. And when we have this prolonged southern wind, it's all bottlenecked up here. And, and I think all of this, this information, and it's, it's foreign to folks who haven't dealt with it for decades. But it's also, I think, becoming more problematic as we have these events for whatever reason. And we'll be talking about that. But anyway, I really appreciate all of the participation. And we have three more of these presentations in the next couple of months. And, and we'll just all have to kind of work together in figuring out how we're going to, to deal with these events. But at any rate, it's been a very busy time when some of you will maybe enjoy your time off, but it was, it was pretty hectic down the side.
Yes, Mr. Moss.
Well, Barbara, that was, you know, Ben and I were there. That was a very informative, if you haven't looked at that CD, please do. It was a highly educational event. I have a couple of things I wanted to bring up. I know we didn't get it today, but hopefully sometime soon we'll be getting a presentation on that HRPDC twenty forty-five socioeconomic data forecast. Anyone who took the time to look at that, there's some very challenging trend lines in that document. And I realize they don't have the scope down to each individual city yet, but I'm going to be engaging the analysts at HRDC to get more information. But there are some good things, but there are some very troubling challenges in that document relative to our future revenue streams. The next thing was, and I appreciate it very much, the financing, Mr. Hanson, that you passed on, that VML is working. But it is somewhat disturbing that, and I realize we're a member of VML, that rather than taking the perspective of how all this change of revenues and circumstances might be allowing us to better spread the burden of taxes, that they're focusing hardly on how we can put more sales tax on more services. It's, it's not exactly a pro taxpayer kind of advocacy that's going on there. That is disturbing. I know we haven't taken a position, so hopefully city staff isn't an advocate for their agenda when we ourselves haven't taken a position on expanding sales taxes to a myriad number of services so the state can get more revenue. And it's not revenue neutral. That is a concern. And I think we ought to be aware of that's going on. So that's just a comment on their activity. And that gets down to the other part about the analysis that was talking about the implication of the federal assault, the state, you know, and local taxes sealing and how deductions work and how that will cause a number, hundreds of thousands of Virginia families to pay more taxes. Hopefully, the General Assembly will correct for that. But in your recommendation, which was the internet tax, was that that could go toward education and that possibly go towards education salaries. And you said if we take out Northern Virginia, we're not as good as we look. And I think that's true. But if we take out New York City or San Francisco or any big city out of any other state, they wouldn't look as good either. So I, I don't know, without doing that for every state, that in fact, we wouldn't be baseline where we were. But that wasn't really the issue so much as I just want to make sure, because often we already got this request, that when the state raises the salaries, they only do it for the quality standards. You know, that's what they do. They raise it for that, which is less than about half, about half of our workforce of roughly, what, ten thousand?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. So that's seven thousand we got to pick up. Well, I don't think we want to find ourselves in a position of saying we're going to make up and give them three percent for the other seven thousand because we might not be able to afford it. So if we're having that legislative proposal, I just want to make sure we're communicating that we're now delinking or should be delinking what we do in compensation and that we're not obligating ourselves to matching the state for the balance of those seven thousand positions. The school board, like they're doing this year, has to put all their money in their pot and do the best that they can. Because I think, I'm not so certain that our local taxpayers can bear that. And I just want to make sure that they don't have a false expectation about that we would match on the other seven thousand with three percent because we might not be able to do that for our own employees. And historically, we've linked the two bodies of employees for general pay increase. I think that's a fair attribution. And I don't want to get us in a box. And so I think we need to watch out for that. But I do agree that we should defer any looking at the school funding formula and any adjustments to that funding until after the November election. As you supposedly said, eight seats are up and there might be a whole different approach. And I do think it's productive to wait. And my last point is, what is the way ahead on the palm trees?
On the what?
Palm trees and the, OmniCorp engineers.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes, sir. We have an annual review of the seawall, our, our federal project, hurricane protection. We had nine deficiencies noted in this year's inspection. One of them was the installation of palm trees associated with Beach Club, associated with the Cavalier project, oceanfront Cavalier project. The developer provided a response to their, and I provided you copies of the I provided you copies of the letters, and also my endorsement letter, that, hey, Corps of Engineers, let's take a look at this. It's not the weight of the trees, the, the two-foot thick plus beneath the sand configuration of the seawall is designed to have major truck traffic go across it and support construction, et cetera, along the seawall. It's really their concern that maybe the root system would find fissures in the concrete and work their way in there, and maybe call into question the integrity. Most of the palm trees never last beyond two years, especially lately with the, the amount of cold weather that we've had. And there's a replacement effort there. We've asked for a 408 study, which we're authorized to do. They have received that. They're going to take a look at that. And under no circumstances should the Corps of Engineers uphold their position with regards to that. We'll immediately issue a directive to remove the trees. But we're asking them to take a look at it. Is there a frequency by which those trees are pulled out? If you know the, how a root ball on a palm tree works, having been down at Captiva when that first tropical storm came through, saw a lot of trees on the island get washed up with the wave action. They have a root ball about like this. They have very thick roots that go out, do a big surface thing, and they absorb water. As the rain comes, comes through the sand, disappears through. It's not a deep penetrating root system as we're used to it. We'll see what their 408 study says. We have plenty of time to make this all happen, and we are not going to jeopardize our cost participation agreement on the federal hurricane protection project.
What were the other discrepancies?
We had some, we had some drainage cleanout that we had to do on one of the, one of the pump systems. We had a stretch of properties where other encroachments, vegetation encroachments, et cetera, had been put on there, not unlike everything else that happens up.
Can we get a list?
I will forward you the same letter with the report list that I provided, Mr. Moss. I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to send it to you all.
What happens when the palm trees die?
They pull them right out, and they replace them with new ones.
No, I know, but that's the thing. Are they going to replace them if they die?
Well, if they're allowed to keep them there because they determine the roots will never get down and embed themselves into the concrete, and their 408 analysis determines that the weight is not an issue, and they authorize it, then they just yank that. They want to keep a certain ambiance associated with their beach club, and they're willing to pay the cost of the foliage and the landscaping associated with it. But like I'm saying to the council and to the public viewing, that should the Corps determine that those palm trees are a risk, we'll have them removed. If they're not, then they'll be probably put on a two-year, you got to replace them anyway, even if they're living. You got to pull them up, move them around, set them back down, so the roots don't, you know, jeopardize our federal project.
So the council will be notified when the 408 decision is shared with the city, and that you will immediately, if it's adverse to the property owners, we will be immediately acting on that report.
Of course.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else on?
Yeah, real quick, Louis. Yesterday was Extortion 17 Day in the city of Virginia Beach. Extortion 17 was the callsign for the Chinook helicopter that was shot down in August 6, 2011, resulting in 30 military, American military deaths, the largest single incident loss of life in Operation Enduring Freedom in Afghanistan. Many of those special operators made their home in Virginia Beach and were stationed in Virginia Beach. And so we'd like to pay remembrance to those who sacrificed for our country.
All right.
One last thing, if I could, my nickel.
Yes.
August 24th is the stand-up of the United States Second Fleet Command in Norfolk. Vice Mayor Lewis is going to be the first of the.
That's a reestablishment of the Second Fleet. So any of you who can make that, if you've never been down to Pier 12 and see the Truman, see some other stuff down, you might find that to be an engaging thing, that's a big employment change for the region. And that's pretty substantial to have another three-star flag in the area, but that's on the 24th of August.
Anybody else? All right. Council review.
Okay, a couple of things.
Yeah, there are.
For abstentions, John, I have you on 3813. Jessica, I have you on 17C and J6 planning.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, under Ordinance Resolutions, a couple of things. Does anybody have any comments before I go through?
I do, and, and not actually just on the, well, this, doing, dealing with Ordinance 14, the transfer of money for the.
Let me stop you on the numbering. So we have two 13s here.
Oh.
We certainly do. So, so Amanda, Amanda's already told me that this is her one mistake for her career. And so if you would look at Ordinance 13, number two, Ordinance to authorize a $25,000 grant to the Navy League, we're going to call that one 14.
Check.
And then it's kind of like we're going to 15, 16, all the way down. Everybody got it, Ben? You got it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All the way down to, to 18. Okay?
That's my extension on 14.
Right. I've got it written down correctly, but it was 13 before it became 14.
You're abstaining on the celebration thing, is that it, Moss?
Yes.
He's abstaining on 14. I'm sorry. Barbara, you had, you have, you have 15, right?
And I'll just make this comment on this item, which will also apply to that planning item dealing with Asheville Park. I'm still just concerned that the, the long-range issue for Asheville Park has different expectations by different people. And I don't know how we, we overcome that, because I know in some places, one of these places, well, it's still talking about this drainage project being Phase 1. And this event that we just had just highlights the fact that that whole area, everything down there south is so susceptible to flooding, and the, the difficulty with putting all of our money in one or two neighborhoods when we have an entire area that has issues is kind of not good. But I know one of the questions that has been raised about this first, or whether, with this project that we're authorizing, is the amount of pumping, and whether that was really necessary, and also the water quality. And I think the water quality is, folks are getting some assurances that the water quality issues are going to be looked at. But I know that we have some disagreement between me and the perception, and, and maybe why it was done. But they're really, this pumping, particularly if the area downstream is already flooded, is just not a good thing. And I hope that we'll work it out so that we have times when, when it can be pumped, and times when it can't be pumped. But, you know, it's, it's awfully hard, and of course, I guess we've got two neighborhoods that are going to be served by pumping. But if you're pumping water from a neighborhood that has a potential to flood, and you're pumping that water into an area that's already flooded, that's not a good thing. And, and even though maybe technically and mathematically, it may appear to be a small amount of water, but there's still the perception of one neighborhood is getting water pumped out of them, and they're not flooded into these areas that have experienced such horrendous flooding. I, I hope we will work it out so that doesn't happen again.
But you're supporting this item?
I'm supporting it, but I'm still saying, yeah, this is the first, this is a step. But I think all the prioritization and so forth is going to have to continue to be done. And I, I hope that, you know, we're doing this, but we're not assuring that, that other Phase 2 is going to happen anytime soon, and that kind of thing. I still am a little concerned about us, you know, saying this is Phase 1, and there's others that's going to come. We've got a lot more that's going to have to have worked done in that area, I think, before we can maybe get back to some of these areas that are getting some expenditure.
So, so before, before we move on to the others, I just want to make sure, everybody should have, for item 3, Resolution to Support Offshore Wind, it's, it's minor change adding Councilman Davenport's name on that one. So that, that's the substitute for that one. And also item, the new 17B for the Justice Byrne Grants, and that is, is, Mark, why don't you explain that?
That adds new paragraph number four, which specifically authorizes the manager an item to make certain certifications that are required in order for the grant to be processed.
Okay.
I have a comment on 13.
Is this new 13?
The old 13.
Current 13.
The current 13, the Lynnhaven River Basin. We are, they're putting up 10 million bucks. Our 35% would be over 5 million. We're not fully funding our 65%. Understand the staff says that's not due till later. I'm not accustomed to entering into obligations that you're not fully funding your share from the start. That's not my federal experience. So I understand why you took these two accounts, because those projects weren't executing the money in the current budget year. But it would have been nice to see other alternatives. I've always say that. I'm not allowed to come and bring single-point solutions to my employer. I don't think we, I think we should get multi-solutions. But I think we are not doing justice. If we can't, if we're going to say we want to sign the agreement, we ought to know where the full money is, and we ought to make the decision upfront. It's that important. Or at least identify what will be that source. Otherwise, we're saying this is the first bill we're going to pay, and are we going to pay it out of stormwater management? You know, I just, that just concerns me. This is not, this is like getting the agreement, but not fully paying for it, and not identifying the sources that would be required to fully execute just the $10 million portion. I'm voting this because I understand the reason to get the work started. But we've, we've got to do better stewardship than what this is. We need to pony up upfront. We're going to sign the agreement, come up with the full now money, and look at more than one choice to fund it, and, and then discuss that. But this just came on Friday as a big thing, and this is not a minor thing to set up a new project, take on an obligation that's not fully funded, and take it from other projects. I just think it deserved more discerning discussion. It's getting, but I am voting for it, but I'm not happy about it.
Are there any other comments on these items? We would add, also, everybody should have a copy of Agenda Request Form, Appointing Victoria Rice to the Position of Assistant City Attorney. And we'd like to add that as item number 19. Everybody okay with that? Mark, how do we put this on consent? Do we have to do it out there?
You'll have to vote, add it to the agenda, but then you can simply add it to consent, provided that it's on consent, which I ask you to do. All right. So anything else on the Ordinance Resolutions?
Jim, I just wanted, I think I heard you right. You just have me as abstaining on 18C only, right?
I have you on seven, well, yes, 18C. Yeah, 18C and J6.
Okay.
Okay.
Is it too late for me to also be added as a, one of the council members requesting the offshore wind?
No, Barbara, that was actually an oversight. Anybody who would want it, be added to it, I thought it was welcome.
I'd like to be added.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have reached out there beforehand. I apologize.
I'd like my name on it, too. Why don't we put everybody, anybody object to their name?
Yeah, his name will be off, yeah.
Everybody else want their name on it?
Yep.
Good.
I guess it's going to pass.
My apologies for not reaching out.
So you got, so you got eight names on it, right? I do the last, right?
Correct.
Okay, under Planning, Item J1, Princess Anne Hotel LLC, City of Virginia Beach. Recommendation by the staff as deferral, as Princess Anne District.
Yes.
Is that a deferral?
It's deferral, yes.
Okay. Is that an indefinite deferral?
I suppose that's the recommendation until they work everything out.
Right, that's right. I just want to make sure. Okay, HOFD Asheville Park LLC, District 7, Princess Anne.
Well, yes.
I would think so, yeah.
But, you know, the, the very important thing is that everyone understands that we are reducing the number of lots in this subdivision, not giving them something that they don't have yet, because there's a lot of, it's very touchy these days.
Also removing partial D from being, thanks to the Vice Mayor, from being a responsibility HOA and being a responsible ability of the city. That's also a fact.
I think it's important that we make that distinction between something that's granting additional building in this area.
Do me a favor, pronounce that word for me. Okay, Item J3, Nathan Hinch. I'm calling with Wykounis for conditional use, Ray Home Occupation Retail Firearms Sales, Kempsville District.
No, no, she's.
Item 4, Brittany Primer, Brandy Miller, conditional use, Ray Family Daycare Home, Centerville District.
No problem.
Edith and Daniel Monroe, conditional use, Ray Family Daycare, Bayside District.
Fine.
Item J6, Donna Denham, Family Daycare Home at 965 Kempsville. Anybody have an issue with that, since the district council member's abstaining? Item 7, H&amp;S Development Group LLC, Columbia, Claba, Virginia Beach, Ray Communication Tower, 1236 Prosperity Road, District 6, Beach. It's got a staff deferral recommendation, planning commission approval.
I've heard no issues with that, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'm fine with approval.
Okay.
I'm voting no.
What is this?
Moss, no. Okay.
Staff deferral, was that something?
What is the purpose behind the staff deferral?
Well, they requested deferral.
Right, yes.
It was a height issue, right?
Yes, sir. They run into some issues with the FAA, so they want to clear that up and make sure the site doesn't get worked.
So the applicant wanted it.
It's an applicant deferral. You still want to vote no for the deferral, John?
No, no, yes, because it's a deferral.
Okay. So we're going to say indefinite deferral on that?
Yes.
We don't have a date. Okay. Item 8, Christopher Stankis for conditional use, Ray Commercial Kennel, 3612 West Neck, Princess Anne District.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Item 9, Resolution to Authorize Three Roadside Guide Signs Along Atlantic and Pacific Avenues Regarding Edward Casey's AREE, District 5, Lynnhaven. I don't have a problem with that. So.
Do we have speakers on anything?
We have speakers on nobody, nothing right now.
Maybe they're still on vacation.
It's over mic.
It is, yeah.
It's a different story.
Okay, now we will call formal session, and the chair will entertain a motion to recess and to close session pursuant to the exemption from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711A. Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes: publicly held property, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3, Princess Anne District, Princess Anne District, and Beach District. Cyber security matters, discussion of plans to protect public safety as it relates to terrorist activity, or specific cybersecurity threats or vulnerabilities, and briefings by staff members, legal counsel, or law enforcement, or emergency service officials concerning actions taken to respond to such matters, or a related threat to public safety. Discussion of information excluded from this chapter pursuant to Subdivision 3 or 4 of Section 2.2-3705.2, where discussion in an open meeting would jeopardize the safety of any person or the security of any facility, building, structure, information, technology system, or software program, or discussion of reports or plans related to the security of any government facility, building, or structure, or the safety of persons using such facility, building, or structure pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A19, New City Hall Security Features. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1. pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1, council appointment, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. May I have a motion? Madam Clerk, Cole Rowe.
Ms. Henley?
Aye.
Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Davenport?
Aye.
Ms. Kane's absent. Mr. Earn?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Win?
Aye.